The decision requirements, the site's been reviewed by planning staff. We've received a copy of the recorded conservation restriction. An as-built plan has been submitted, as well as the letter from the architect saying that everything is in compliance. And the parking spaces for access to the trail have been constructed.
Okay, is there any work left to do?
No.
Okay, so what's your recommendation?
I recommend that you release the two bonds for $10,000.
Is it two $10,000 bonds, $20,000 in bond money?
Yes.
Yes, you want $20,000 back, not $10,000?
Yeah.
All right, questions, comments? We got a motion to release the bond?
Motion to release all remaining bonds for this project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job.
Thanks, sir.
All right, 234 Brentwood Circle, Sarah Gold, Smith Schwartz, and William Hannum. Monica, it's my understanding that these folks are not present today?
No, they are not available to come to this meeting. I've suggested that they definitely attend at the next meeting to discuss the waiver request.
All right, so if we could put that over to our next meeting, please.
Okay.
707 Turnpike Street, William Sweet, waiver request for site plan review under section 195, 8.11, for chimney sweep office.
That's me.
Monica?
Thank you.
Can you identify yourself and tell us where you live?
Hi, my name is William Sweet and I live in 2 Winmore Drive, Scarborough, Maine.
Okay, and what would you, what are you requesting from the board?
Well, we would like to occupy 707 Turnpike Street for my chimney sweep office. And we'd like to put some parking for three vehicles on a section that's currently lawn. So if you look at the drawing here, this shows the property itself and measurements for the driveway. And then we have another drawing of it, yeah, thank you. Unfortunately, that's...
These are the three spots?
Yes, sir, they are.
Let's see if I can bring up the...
There we go, oh, thank you very much. Currently, there's lawn there and, but this would allow me to park vehicles without having it so close to the wetlands in the back, in the side.
So where is, where is 707?
It's coming from the real estate office today.
Countryside realty?
Oh, countryside, oh.
Yeah, so the driveway actually ends up around us, looks like residential.
Right, right, I'm familiar with, okay. And it's on general business, right?
Yes.
And what's that, are you going to have a chimney sweep?
Yes, please.
So how much parking is there now, is there any?
Well, there's a drive, I guess you could call it, that circles behind the house. And when I met with the technical advisory committee, they kind of discouraged that we would park on the perimeter. And so we've arranged, as a, for the size of the property, I'm required to provide 12 parking spaces. So the, we've got nine along the building. Yeah, I realize, sorry about that.
Yeah, there we go.
So along the building, there would be nine spaces. And then the remaining three, they're, without being able to put them in the driveway, they're recommended to get it further away from the wetlands.
Fair enough. Do you actually think in reality you'll need 12 spaces?
Sometimes, not overnight, but when everybody's there at the same time, yeah.
How many employees is for the two?
I have 10 employees total, including me.
And six vans, so the employees come in their car and they leave in a van, six and a half. But the shift.
Is the parking the only extent of the work you plan to do to this building?
Yeah, everything else is basically yes.
How close are those three spots to the street?
They're, well, if we can go back to that drawing, you can actually see.
Sorry.
Thank you, Monica.
Do you have an idea of how close that is?
Yeah, actually, if you could be checking here, I can tell you.
Monica, what is the parking going to, what's the surface for the sign?
The surface was either going to be gravel or...
I can match the gravel that's there, or I can put like the kind of papers that you can grow grass up through.
And this would require conservation approval as well?
Yes, this would require filing of an RDA.
Sorry, I don't need to drop that, so it's before you for a waiver and it will require oversight and conservation permission due to the proximity of the wetlands in the back.
I'm just trying to work, is the parking on the side where the, where the sign is now?
Well, the sign's kind of in the middle, but it's on, it'll be on the end closer to the, to 495, I guess you could say.
Okay.
Do you have the dimension for the street?
I would say it's about, to the street is about, well, it depends on what, from the actual street, it's going to be about 50 feet.
The right of way extends another 10 feet into the property line?
Yeah. That, let's see if that's, yeah, maybe 40 feet is more accurate.
And we're being asked to waive the site plan review?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I mean, I just make the observation that I think this is the kind of thing that should reasonably quit wave, say point reviews. It's an existing commercial structure, it doesn't dramatically and revocably change the type of use. We should just, I think in my mind, just establish a few simple conditions, you know, in terms of already wants. And then maybe ask them to check back in a year just to make sure we didn't do anything stupid. But other than that, I don't think we gain anything by going through full site plan review.
Anyone else? I agree with John, I think that...
Hey, John, I would just add, the surface today, the entire driveway is gravel.
Yeah.
If it were to be paved, you may want to condition that that would trigger stormwater reviews. Because the wetland line literally goes through the entire property, but it's very close off the edge of that stone.
Is the 50 foot that's...
Yep.
So do you suggest that if the gravel is maintained and just extended, that we don't really need to do further stormwater review? But if it's changing the surface type, then we'd want you to come back or at least provide us a stormwater review.
Okay, sure.
So I make a motion that we waive site plan review for 707 Turnpike Street, subject to the conditions that we just discussed.
Okay, so the conditions are that if the material for the driveways changed, that you provide us with a stormwater report.
Okay.
And obviously, a condition on approval through the conservation commission.
And come back in a year.
And then, yeah, within, within one year to come back and provide us with a report, pictures of...
What happened, what we did?
Of what you did.
Yeah, okay.
So we can see that it confirmed with what you're telling us is going to happen.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll second that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mill Road and Johnson Street, TKZ, request for extension of a land disturbance special permit approved on February 20th, 2018.
Good evening, everybody. Monica, are you starting anything, or you want me to just jump in?
Why don't you introduce and then we can jump in after.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Tom Zarico, 1665 Great Pond Road.
And Mr. Zarico, what are you looking for on this one?
This is a land disturbance permit that was issued just under a year ago. I think it was one of the first independent land disturbance permits, if you will, that wasn't associated with a major subdivision. There was four lots combined, two that front on Mill Road, two on Johnson. We exceeded the one, I think of the one acre minimum, so we had to come in. It was quite a lengthy process. If you recall, we sort of separated off the, the conditions, if you will, of bonding and work on individual lots, because I was buying two of the four lots. Gene actually brought it to my attention that the, the way this bylaw is written requires that any extension request to the two-year permit horizon be submitted a year in advance of its expiration, which is pretty unusual. As you know, I think, I think the bylaw, just for the record, is, is very unclearly written. I mean, I've been through a lot of these things, relatively educated and experienced with these. And it's, it's not at all clear, the way the bylaw's written, that it, that you need to come in a year in advance. But just in the event that, you know, we're being cautious. What's, what?
We're here.
So, and I have no contract on those other two lots. I have been working, as you probably know, on 185 and 203 Mill Road. Nearly completed with that work that I'm doing there, these other two lots. I'm not sure when the property owners who've owned them for quite a long time, and she's elderly. I made this request basically as a courtesy to make sure that those permits remained active, because I don't know if they're thinking of selling this year, next year, or the year after. So it was really, I, I submitted the permit application initially. I thought it would be the right thing for me to do to just come in and make the request, even though it's very early in the process and may not be necessary. But because of the way the bylaw's written, making the request now.
And nothing, no changes, correct?
No changes, it's really just process.
All right, get a motion, Gene, anything?
No, it's just, it is part of a larger plan, and so permitting would need to be extended on the other two lots. I don't think there's any timetable on the horizon. If it wasn't to be constructed within the period that you extended to, they'd have to resubmit for a new permit. There's no downside, it's just the same materials will probably be used, but they'd have to resubmit.
I don't know if you wanted to limit the extension. I know in, in speaking about it, we thought it might be best to extend it no more than two years and then have the applicant come back for review if need be.
So the original permit is for two years?
And it would expire next February, so you're convinced.
So when we say an extension, does that make it three years from today or two years from today?
It would make it three years from today. But again, this is a little unusual because of the early notice that is apparently required. We would not, on any other permit, we would be coming in a month or two prior to expiration and extending from that period on typically. This, again, because of the way the bylaw's written, we're just being a little, a little proactive here and want to make sure, I mean, it is early to make the request. It may not even be necessary, but because of the way the bylaw's written, we just want to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks for them down the road. These are lay folks, they're not, they're not in our industry. They may or may not be aware, you know, 11 or 12 months from now, that, that the expiration could occur or that it needed to be extended as of this February.
Gene, do you know what the bylaw does have?
I'm sorry?
Do you know, what's the number of the bylaw?
It's under the Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Bylaw, section 165-5, point M. And that grants the extension of time, which can be granted by the, the planning board upon written formal requests by the applicant.
Is there, is there a limit?
No, no limit is indicated.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't actually call out a, you know, a, an extension limit. Most of our, most of our permits either extend for a year or two, depending on, depending on the nature of the permit.
So Monica, what's your recommendation to extend it one year from the date of the current expiration?
No more than two.
No more than two, okay.
And I, I think the bylaw, if I'm, unless I'm mistaken, only allows for one extension, is that correct? I don't have it in front of me. But the reason for asking for two, or hoping that it would be two, is because if it isn't two, then probably in another year, year and a half. If it hasn't, if something hasn't been done there, then they'll have to submit an entirely new application, which is pretty burdensome. This application for this, these four lots was over 4,000 pages. And, you know, I managed to submit that, but the average homeowner is not going to be able to manage their way through that very easily.
Now, correct my memory here, or refresh my memory. Are these properties that these property owners are, are going to develop and sell? Or is this something that there's some kind of understanding or hope that you would buy these properties and then...
That's a, that's a very good question. Just to clarify and to refresh everybody, this was four Form A lots on the corner of Mill and Johnson. One of them includes the residence, the family residence, which is still occupied. And as I said, she is, I don't know, in her late 80s or early 90s. Not sure when she is going to stay there till. And if they, if they offer them for sale to me, then I'll, then I'll discuss it with them. If not, then, then there'll be somebody else. I don't have control, ultimate control over that. But again, there is someone living there with, with not a specific plan. And it would be a shame, I think, to, to create an urgency for them under the circumstances and the fact that they've been there and are still living there.
Under 165-5 point M, it doesn't limit the number of extensions. However, if an extension is not granted, then the permit shall be considered revoked.
So everything must be completed within two years, is that... Upon the expiration of one year from the date of permit issuance. I mean, you could read that, that that's the original permit and not an extension, which means you get one extension and it doesn't give a time period. Okay.
So I'm just doing about two years.
Oh, I don't, I think it's okay, I just want to make sure we can do it. Okay, so...
Yeah, it's probably a precedent setting at this point, I would guess, because this is one of the few permits of this type that have been issued.
Have we, have we come across this issue before? No, okay. So what is the date that the permit is due to lapse?
February 20th, well, the original permit was issued on February 20th, 2018, so that'd be...
So February 20th, 2020. So then, can we get, so a motion to extend the land disturbance special permit until February 20th, 2022, same terms and conditions.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Okay, we're going to go to our potential May 2019 town meeting zoning by law amendments. Okay, so what I'd like to do, well, Monica, we have two new ones, correct? Or two ones that we haven't discussed yet?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we'll kind of play those two by year. The two that we've already discussed several times, Bowden Capital Group, that's the one on Turnpike Street, and Tom Zarico's, the Historic Society Building. Those we've discussed several times, we've had a lot of public input, I expect the same tonight. What I would like to do tonight is have the board give a sense to these applicants, whether these are bylaws that we would wish to sponsor. Because if so, then we need to start writing warrant articles to prepare them and have them public hearings. If they're not things that we're going to sponsor, I think we should let the applicants know so that they can decide if they want to use it as a city park or situation. So I think we have enough information on both of those. I hope to at least make our recommendations tonight. On the two newer ones, I'm, I'm just not sure if we do or not. If we do, great, if not, we can hold those to another meeting. So that's kind of the plan. Go through the same format that we have in prior meetings. We'll have the applicant come up, give us any new information. If there's no new information, then fine, we'll, we'll go with the information we have to date. Give us a little recap, give us any new information. We'll take public comment and then we'll discuss, okay? All right, so Alex, start with you.
Thank you very much. So the land in question, we've been to a couple...
Do you want to introduce, sorry, Jeff?
Oh, sorry, Alex Loth, 76 Innes Street, North Anover.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've had, I'll back up. So the property in question is at the corner of Hillside Drive and Turnpike Street on Route 114. We've had conversations about putting together the lots there and finding a way to make them work commercially. And so what we're looking to do is do a commercial development there. We do not have the two acres required in the CDD zone to do a commercial development, which is why we started talking to the town and the planning board about a path forward to being able to do a commercial development, understanding the intent of the zoning in that area, the CDD zoning. This came to the planning board as a potential change to general business, which was from some conversations between our organization and Gene and others in the town government. Subsequent to the conversations we've had and the meetings we've had, what I would like to suggest tonight, and it's not entirely a new suggestion, we've gone over this in the meetings as well, is that rather than taking these two or three parcels located at the corner of Hillside Drive and Route 114 and changing them to a different zone, now, we as an organization are open to that, if that's what the planning board wishes to do. I think another way to move forward might best be to think about, if the board is open to this, revising that CDD 2 zone. Because looking at the intent of the zone back when it was put in, and if you read why it was created, it was to foster development along that corridor. But since that zone was created, no development has occurred along that corridor. So it's not working. With a couple of changes that may occur. So if the intent of CDD 2 is to foster commercial development, which was the stated intent, a couple of changes could make that happen. And so I would suggest for those changes, and again, this is for discussion, I'm open to other ways to make this happen, but we'd love to find a way to make it happen, is to take that CDD area, bring it down from a two-acre requirement to a one-acre requirement, which doesn't have a huge impact, I think, on the CDD zone. I took a look, and I apologize, it was late, but maybe you did the same thing. You did, great, thank you, Gene. I did the same homework that, that Gene did, and I analyzed CDD 2, and she also did CDD 1, and looked at the size of the various lots there. If you take it down to one acre, there's only a couple of lots that it probably affects that might be able to do something. I don't know how far into the weeds I should get here. There's, in CDD 2, there's only about, what is it, 10 properties or so. There's a 3.7 acre lot that's a car wash. It seems unlikely that anything would, else would go on that lot. There's a six acre lot that is vacant and mostly wet, as far as I could tell. There are two lots, which are, as far as I can tell, are the fence company's land and together comprise almost an acre, and is also very wet. There is a lot of 674 Turnpike Street, which is 1.48 acres. So that is someone who potentially could take advantage of a change in the CDD 2 zoning. It's a, it's a residential house now, though actually I couldn't recall whether there's a business operating out of it or not. That's what I thought, it might have changed to a real estate office. So it looks like a home, it's being used as a home office. They might be able to take advantage of this, which the board could decide whether that's a good thing or a bad thing. There's a very small lot being used as a business for Eastern Shed. I think CD Seal Coating out of another small, less than an acre lot. The medical office building is on an acre. That's probably a good use of that lot already, so unlikely for any changes there. And then you get to the land that we have, which comprises a little bit over an acre. And then the land next to it, Mr. Zarico's land, which is a little bit over a half an acre. So by changing it to an acre, it would enable us to put together an appropriate commercial development on one of the busiest roads in town, which, again, the stated goal of CDD is to, is to foster an opportunity for creative development, serve as a transition area, and allow flexibility under a special permit. So whatever happens in any of these places would have to come back for a special permit as well. So our company has done a lot of developments in town, residential and commercial. We'd like to do another attractive commercial development on these sites, and we'd like to work with the board to make that happen. I know it's a lot of information to throw out there, but it seemed that maybe that's a more appealing way to move forward than changing it to general business, and it's also a more limited scope. One more suggestion, then I'll, I'll stop talking for a minute. If we do change the zoning size, there's another requirement there that I, that we would like to see removed to make for a viable development. Right now, the CDD 2, for anything that has a drive-through in it, be it a bank, or a restaurant, or a coffee shop, requires five acres of land and 400 feet from any adjoining residential property. That makes a development there very hard. Knowing what I've seen in the commercial realm and what works for commercial properties nowadays, drive-throughs are what businesses want, to some degree, they're what a lot of residents want. So whether it's a bank, or it's a coffee shop, a viable development there would likely include that. We've got a four-lane state highway there, and a drive-through is a way to make a viable development.
Can you go back up to the, to the highlighted ones again?
This is the CDD 2.
All right, so CDD, so restaurant, drive-through restaurants are...
They're initially excluded.
Initially excluded.
And then a number...
Wait, what, I'm trying to just, what's number seven? So drive-throughs for banks?
For banks.
So, so drive-through restaurants and drive-through banks are explicitly excluded at first?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It was a warrant article a few years ago that provided for number 14 to be added.
Okay, so it's drive-through restaurants, okay?
With certain restrictions.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was then permitted by special permit. Yes, uses by special permit.
Yeah.
Our banks with the drive-through, in CDD 2, or posses, or posses split, comprising at least five acres, will be added.
So that pretty much makes it impossible?
Well, in addition to the size limitation here, and decreasing it to one acre, the uses that were proposed initially on either just a two acre, I'm sorry, a two lot development or a three lot were restaurant-type cafe with a drive-through, a bank with a drive-through. And so in addition to the acreage requirement, there's a challenge, given these specific uses that will be allowed.
Right, I'm just saying, this is, I mean, as it is right now, bank with a drive-through, five acres, I mean, you're not going to get five acres in CDD 2.
There's one lot in CDD 2.
They said it was mostly wet.
It was the fence company, which he has several posses of land, and they had them all together.
Okay.
And I believe at the time, they felt confident that it was a couple of those, and it would...
Okay. All right. Anything, Alex, anything else? Why don't we take any resident comments, if there is any, and then we'll discuss? Or did people have questions, or, I mean, I don't have any questions, I don't know if anyone has a question, I do want to discuss, but...
Well, yeah, let's make sure the light will like to listen to.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, anyone who would like to come up, come up, state your name, give your address, give your comments or questions.
John Casey, 84 Innes Street. First, I'd like to know, are we voting for the CCD 2, or are we voting for the general business? Because that, that's a big difference, yeah.
So we are going to, we're not actually going to take any formal vote necessarily today. We are going to just, so I don't know. We're going to, we're going to get...
I think, at least the way this, originally, the owner of the property floated the idea of general business, but now you heard him tonight, is that he's offering another option of tweaking the CDD 2 to make what he wants to do.
Under general business, besides a school, is there anything else they can't build there?
It's pretty open.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And that's a, there's a lot of residents who wait behind it, too.
I don't think we're, we haven't voted on it yet, but I don't think we're particularly...
That was just, for my information, question, okay?
We're not particularly inclined to general business.
I don't think we're particularly inclined to general business.
Yeah.
All right, the CCD 2, I could see that he wants to lower the lots, but if you look across the street, they have the one acre zoning over there. Nothing's been done over there, not a thing, okay? I mean...
I mean, the situation on each side of the street is a little bit different. I mean, the circumstances are a little bit different. I think it's the lots on your side of the street... I mean, the circumstances are a little bit different, because the lots on your side of the street are a little bit bigger, and that was the reason originally, we set the minimum at two acres, not one acre. On the other side of the street, the lots are smaller, it's wetter, it doesn't go back as far, so we set it to one acre. I think the decision we're trying to deal with is, can we reduce the size of a lot? On your side of the street, the less than two acres, does it still protect the neighborhood? And what is the appropriate adjustment to make in terms of drive-throughs that would protect the neighborhood? I think that's really the...
Okay, yeah, the only, the only thing, that particular side of one-fourteen is only two lanes, it's not four. Now, I hear that the state in two thousand twenty-three is supposed to open that up to four lanes, so Starbucks Shop has four lanes, and right down by Rite Aid has four lanes, so I hear they're supposed to open it all up. So those lots are going to be small.
Just speculation, so we're going to just assume it is what it is.
Yeah, okay, but I'm just saying, that's only two lanes there, so any traffic in that area is going to be unbelievable. And I don't think there's a permit on one-fourteen, is there? It has to come off the hillside, right? In that area, in those lots?
What, a curb cut?
Yeah.
Well, I, that's part of the process, the applicant would have to go to the state for that on any project.
Okay, so one could be coming off the hillside, I know the driveway is on the hillside, yeah.
Well, I mean, it might be, it might be both hillside and one-fourteen, we don't know yet. I mean, that's, we're not close to that point.
Okay.
The conceptual plan did show...
That would be both, I mean, that would be the more logical.
There'd be like a drive through.
The conceptual plan was submitted, and discussed a little bit, or at least you can have it.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of it, that's why I would have been here.
You know, one permit submitted for all three lots, and one for just two, this is the conceptual plan. Is there a curb cut on one-fourteen by the hillside?
Okay, the other thing, my backyard is right up against that, okay? So if you were to go in and ask for a, like a bank, or something like that, that's not obnoxious, because we don't have traffic all night long there. But if you were going to put in a Burger King, or Chick-fil-A, or something like that, that becomes very obnoxious to the abutting neighbors. And if you have a drive-through, hopefully there'll be not the CCD two setbacks, which are like ten feet. So I mean, the drive-through, they can almost pass it into my house, and it wouldn't be good, yeah?
That's what, yeah, yeah.
So I think, yeah, I just consider that, because these things are... And is he giving you a traffic report on hillside, onto one-fourteen?
You're getting ahead of yourself here.
We're not there yet.
Okay, okay, I'll just say...
We're just trying to figure out whether we should tweak the zoning or not. And it obviously, we'd like to get neighborhood input to the extent feasible, although obviously, you don't know exactly what the project is, but you can, you pretty much appreciate that if it's just two lots, fifty thousand square feet, it's going to be one, one structure.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But the process is, this has to go to town meeting. We're talking about it as more, we're trying to decide whether this board wants to sponsor this initiative so that we can craft it to try to protect neighborhood interests while also allowing the use. So it's, it is a long process.
I could say, the CCD two, the longer to like an acre or something like that, I'm not that much against it, okay? Because the, everything in the plan keeps it from being an obnoxious structure being put in there because of CCD two, and it can't be a Burger King or anything else. Now, if it's going to be a doctor's office, or a bank, that's fine with me, or even a coffee shop, yeah, that's... That, that, that wouldn't be, that's only a limited time during the day, not a... From six in the morning to eleven-thirty at night, that would be kind of obnoxious.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, thanks.
Hi, Bill DiAtomo, fifteen Greenwood East Lane in North Annover. I spoke a little bit at one of the earlier meetings, I don't want to repeat myself. I'm trying to figure out, though, a little bit now what we're talking about, because when we were initially here, there was talk about changing the general business, and I certainly had some reservations about that. There's now talk about changing it to one of the CCDs, and I'm not, I guess I'm not sure about a number of different things. One is, which plan we're talking about, the conceptual plan one or two? And I'm guessing that we're talking about just that parcel, because I think that would meet the one-acre requirement that the CDD would...
We're, we're, what makes it hard is we're mixing two things. We're mixing, mixing the zoning with a specific use under the zoning. And sometimes it's useful to toggle between the two, because you want to see if that works, you know, the specific project works in the zoning. But I think, the way to look at it is, and I think Mr. Casey sort of in the end got it pretty well, and I think Aaron, you know, spelled it out pretty well, is, we have an existing zone, CCC two, that we put in place a number of years ago. It hasn't been picked up and developed, so maybe it's time to make some changes. And the two changes that we're trying to plan is, one, should we make the lot size smaller? And the second is whether we should change what we allow for drive-throughs for the property. Those are really the two things that we're trying to figure out.
Well, that's where I guess I'm, I have a question. Are we talking about changing the designation of this particular area? Which is, I think, what the initial question was, and now it seems like the question is, are we changing the zoning bylaw to handle all of these parcels that are along this corridor?
Well, this is the CCD two district, in other words...
But these are not the only parcels in CCD two, are they?
No, they are.
I thought they went down that road a while.
Oh, they went further down the road, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm asking then, is...
So to clarify, the proposal that Mr. Loth made two minutes ago was to change the whole, the zoning for all CCD two, so that the base requirement is only one acre, rather than two acres, and to make changes to the use, what would be allowed, how you can use a drive-through.
Okay, that frankly seems to me a pretty significant change from what we were talking to previously, in terms of what his proposals were two or three weeks ago. I mean, this is a different thing, and I'm going to respectfully suggest it may be a little premature to make a decision, even if it's to move forward or to sponsor something, when this really hasn't been, and honestly, I haven't had a chance to look at it. I don't know how I feel about this, if you're changing the whole corridor along with one-fourteen.
I mean, it's, it's, it's the kind of thing, I mean, having been, when it happened originally, and walking up and down that street probably ten, fifteen times, and, you know, walking every lot and property and so forth, I think that I can kind of tell you what the thought process was that, and I think what would be the thought process now, is that we knew there were a number of large parcels, and we knew there were a lot of smaller parcels, and we decided two acres was the reasonable number, because it would limit the number of curb cuts on the property. I think in hindsight, because something has happened, we may have been off. We might have been, you know, the size of them might have been too large, and it would be tough to assemble anything. So I think, looking at it as, as a one acre versus two, you can obviously see that at the one end of the, the street, where we're talking about, it might have an impact there, and it may have an impact with just one other lot further down the street. I mean, I think you can pretty quickly go through it and figure out where the impacts are going to be. So I think, I think it's a fair planning thing to go through and decide whether we want to make this change or not. I think it's a, you know, you could argue, you could make it one acre, and then probably it's not going to have much of an impact at all.
In fact, at the initial proposal of general business, the applicant met with the NCO. And there's, there were two schools of thought. On the other side of Hillside Road, that's a general business plaza, and this would extend it three additional lots. It wouldn't have extended it all the way down, because those lots are configured much differently than these first three. And so to start the conversation, it was started with, it could be general business, it could be CCD two, but it would require changes to both the use restrictions as well as the lot size. And so the board at the last meeting gave direction, let's look at CCD two more, and see if we can go that route, and that's why that spreadsheet was compiled, and each lot was looked at individually. To combine lots and get to two acres would be very difficult.
And I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not suggesting otherwise. I mean, I do think that there is been a dirt of development along that corridor, and yeah, it's hard to put things together, especially when you take into account all the wetlands that are around there. Everybody's pretty limited. And I don't particularly have a problem with what Minco is proposing. My problem is that there's no, at the moment, I understand there's a different planning board stage of this, but there's no guarantee with respect to what Minco decides to do. If they sell the property tomorrow, and to Mr. Casey's point, somebody wants to put a Dunkin' Donuts in there that's open from six in the morning until eleven at night.
Well, one of the things, yeah, one of the things we do is... It's part of, we've done this in the past, is we've covered it, certain uses.
And that's, and all I'm suggesting is that before you go ahead and change the zoning in something, that... And maybe this has happened, maybe I missed something in the intervening week or two, and I was not at the last meeting, but I don't know, I know that I haven't had a chance to give consideration to what happens if you change that corridor as opposed to just this particular piece. And I respectfully suggest, I mean, one of the interesting, the distinguishing parts of this parcel is that it's not just Turnpike Street, it also opens onto Hillside, and we're talking about adding a drive-through, which was not part of the general business where that Starbucks Plaza is. But putting a drive-through that empties out onto Hillside is a completely different animal. If it's a bank, again, that's one thing, if it's a Dunkin' Donuts, that's something else entirely.
Well, you're right, that the drive-through is the second element. There's really two issues here, there's the size, and there's the drive-through, whether you allow drive-throughs only for non-restaurant use, non-pass. In my mind, we'd have to go through and decide whether we want to tweak it for both types of uses or what type of use per se.
So that's a disaster we're going to have in about five minutes?
And that's all I'm suggesting, is I think that needs to be carefully considered. I'm not sure where I, I think I know where I am, but again, I'm not trying to, I think development there should be encouraged, but as with many things, you know, it should be done thoughtfully, and I'd like to know exactly what is possible there before we go ahead and make wholesale, somewhat spot zoning changes.
It's actually not spot zoning, it's the opposite.
Well, if you're talking about a small area, and again, originally we were talking about just that parcel, I understood.
You could argue the whole CDD is spot zoning, because it, you know, I mean, but, fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Susan Breen, I live at five-O gab. I just had a few things, I don't have questions, just things to think about if we go forward with this. Already with the development there, that part of one-fourteen is really congested, and there's a lot of people that don't, that already cut down Hillside and Chestnut, so those roads are really flooded with traffic. That intersection making a left onto one-fourteen, or a left off of one-fourteen onto Hillside is very scary and dangerous already. So I think, just sort of thinking through, like, is that a place where you'd need to put a light? And everything, as it's getting, and then the poor people that live on Hillside Road, there is no way you can walk on that road safely, so I don't know if it's something to think about, maybe putting a sidewalk there to help people, just so they have access. And also just confirm with, like, the police and fire, because I think they probably dispatch people to that stretch of one-fourteen on a daily basis, in the afternoon. You just hear them, and you see them going out there. So those are just a few thoughts to think about, but thank you. Thank you.
Hi, John Zarico, one-eighty-two Hillside. So I am in the parcel there that would become an isolated house, which is one of the objectives that I did not want to happen to my residents moving forward, and how I was part of the original CCD two zoning proposal, to try to not have houses isolated and surrounded by developments. So my question would be, if you were going to reduce the zoning lot requirement to one acre, or some other number, you know, that would potentially cause me to be an isolated home if we were not able to reach an agreement for the sale of our property. So if you, just hypothetically, said it was going to be one acre, and those two lots that Minco currently owns was conforming to that one acre, what does my deeded access right of way over their lot, and it reduces their usable space on that lot by maybe ten thousand square feet, how would that impact potential zoning, and how would that impact those lots? Is that something? Gene, I had sent you the deed...
It's going to be...
That shows that I have a driveway access over those two lots, which effectively reduces their fifty thousand square feet to maybe forty thousand square feet of usable space. So how would that impact the zoning change, and how, plot size, and how would that impact my lot?
I'm not sure, I don't think we can really give you legal advice on that, that seems more of a legal question. If we change the zoning as suggested, in terms of reducing the lot size requirement to one acre, it would be up to Minco when coming forward with a request for a special permit to show that they add the requisite acreage to qualify.
So would there be consideration to, say, making it one and a half acres? So then it would be something where they, that my lot would not be isolated, and...
I don't think, I mean, we can certainly discuss it, but I'm not sure we're going to hold them hostage to your lot.
Yeah, we don't want to tie the personal lot thing with, with, with our policy.
Right, so, but I do have that access, and it reduces their effective usable space on that lot, so...
Yeah, but whether that...
Does that play into...
The size of the lot, still the size of the lot, it just is less usable, but it's still, I think it was still qualified in the zoning, so...
Okay, so, again, so going back to when this CCD one and CCD two zoning were implemented, I advocated for that to happen so that, as there are some houses that are isolated on that stretch, not to be one of those houses, and now it seems like things are not necessarily playing out as I might have hoped, but...
We're trying to do the best we can for considering the town as a whole, and...
And again, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this either, but I just want to be included and not excluded, or not forced, or...
I understand, we're doing the best we can.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
All right, so... I'm sorry, just can I just add one thing to that? Sure. I'll be very, very quick, and I appreciate your time. I just, picking up on what he said, just looking quickly, he's got about twenty-five thousand square feet. So if this becomes a CDD two, and you need forty-three thousand square feet, I'm not sure what, if anything, he's going to be able to do with that lot. He does become isolated, that becomes a residence that nobody can do anything with, except leave a house there, which seems somewhat antithetical to what the town is trying to actually create. That's all.
Combine with the...
Combine with the other one, it always survives the other one, that one is on the top.
Okay, so I think, John, how you were framing it, I think they're two separate discussions, or two separate but linked discussions. Are we okay with changing the acreage requirement from two acres to one acre, or some other number? Two, what do we think about drive-throughs? So why don't we have the discussion bifurcated? So first discussion, are people comfortable with it as one acre?
Yeah, I mean, what I would say is, I feel like this is something we as a board should do, I think. It fits in with our domain. It's possible that when we end up with a solution, the applicant or the project may not like it, but I think we're, I think we're doing it in the context of the overall zoning. What I would say is, my view is, instinctively, I'm in favor of one acre. I'd still like to look at the other parcels very quickly, but one acre, you know, I think you could make a reasonable argument that one acre or something maybe slightly larger than that would be.
So you're comfortable reducing the number potentially to one acre, some other number similar, it's somewhere around there, and sponsoring something on that, Gene, of course?
Yeah, all right, I agree.
I'm up into some accommodation. I don't know what that would be at this point.
Exactly, right, okay. And, but sponsoring it once we go through the public hearing process and figure it out. Peter?
Well, what I'm trying to think through is what are the impacts reducing it to one acre? I'd be really interested in hearing people's thoughts. I mean, one impact is how might it apply elsewhere? And people wanna take a little longer to look at that. But what also are the impacts to adjoining properties by reducing to one acre? Are there impacts to the adjoining properties? Because the use on the parcel will be within one acre instead of within two acres. So would reducing the size impact others?
You mean in the VR three district that's behind the houses?
Yeah, and I'm just trying to think through that. I'd love to hear any thoughts on that. I mean, to me, that's.
Yeah, and that's where I think to some degree, the, you know, listening to the others and also thinking about the drive-throughs becomes relevant. I mean, originally, we picked two acres, probably as much as anything else to reduce the number of curb cuts. That was the thing. The problem though is I think, you know, if you look at it, even if you combine the three lots as opposed to two at the corner, you still don't have anything big enough. So right now, effectively, under the bylaw, you can't do anything. And so I think in a sense is, you know, we could argue we made a mistake when we did it originally. We set it slightly too high because one of the, the one area where you can, you can combine lots, we've made it a little bit bigger. So the question ends up being, you know, what impact on the neighbors is it gonna be if you, you know, you put one or two small structures there? I mean, that's really what it comes down to. And that's the most you can be able to get, I think, on any of the lots. And I'm not, I'm not, I mean, as somebody who's lived through many years of commercial or residential, I don't see this being insurmountable. I think you can screen reasonably well and I don't think the use is intensive. Now, my instinct is to be against drive-throughs for any restaurant use because I think it extends too long across the day. And it's just too many hours and it's too many, too many cars. Whereas something like a bank, I think probably is a relatively benign use.
I, that's my thought as well.
Yeah.
So Alex, could, could you come up on that particular point? So I think where we're kinda coming down, as I read the tea leaves amongst the board, is that I think we're supportive of making a zoning change, likely changing, keeping it within CCD two, lowering the acreage requirement. I don't see the bank drive-through particularly. If we can figure something out to make that work, I'm not sold on a restaurant drive-through. So I want you to be aware of that because I don't know what that, where that leaves you guys in terms of your plans.
Yeah, so this, one of the first things that kicked us towards moving this forward, because we controlled these properties for some time, was actually speaking with a user that was interested in moving to this site with a coffee shop with a drive-through. And so that kinda moved things forward for us. So with the two lots, a retail use, a bank use works well. I think one of the downsides to not allowing for some sort of food-related drive-through is it actually makes it more difficult to finalize any potential deal with the other landowner. Because with the three lots, as you saw our original plan, we had space and we had, we had space for a nice development that includes both a bank, two users anyway. And I think if there are two users, the likelihood is one of them we would want to have be a food-related drive-through. Now, I live there, I don't have any interest in having a 24-hour McDonald's in my backyard. And I think, you know, the board, there are ways to keep that from happening. On the other hand, there are coffee shops on this street. There is a coffee shop on the other side of the street that historically likes having a drive-through and doesn't have one now. So if that flexibility were allowed, I think we are less likely to have an isolated lot, if that's important to the board. So I guess keep that in mind. In my opinion, Route 114, it's a state road, it's very busy. It is two lanes in that section, it's four lanes in the rest of the section. It's a commercial corridor. It's one of our two busiest roads in town. If we're going to have that kind of business anywhere, that's where it's gonna be. So anyway, so that's my, that's my take on that. If the board decides not to go that way and wants to support what you're discussing, which is the potential for a use including a bank with a drive-through, we would be happy and we would move forward with putting together a nice development for the town. But I guess please think about that and think about the entire CCD two. What kind of businesses are going to go there? If you want some of these old structures to turn into something else, I think keeping an open mind about drive-throughs is not a bad idea.
Okay. Good. Okay. Sure.
My name is Gerald Brackner, I live at the board here in Pleasant Street. I've been unaware of this discussion up to now, but sitting here listening to it, I would not be in favor of allowing a zoning change or a use that intrudes commercial into a Hillside, which is an entirely residential area. I think to the extent that anything on that corner is entirely focused on 114, that's very different. But once you start having cars going in and out of a residential area into a commercial establishment and a parcel that's been designated for a commercial establishment, you're now really polluting the residential area in a very serious way that I don't think the people who live there bargained for when they bought that. I've walked up and down that street and it's a very nice residential area. And it will change irrevocably by now coming around the corner and bringing commercial onto that street. Eventually, people will say, well, it's this far up the street, why shouldn't it go that far up the street?
It's already done for commercial.
Hillside?
No.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that. But I think that's something that I would not expand at all and I would absolutely not want a curb cut into Hillside off of that. I think it's a very bad precedent to set for injecting a commercial into a residential area. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so.
We have another one.
Oh, yeah, just one point. Yeah, sure.
The, everybody's talking about.
Well, just come on up, come on up to the, Mr. Casey, just come on up.
John Casey, 84 industry. Everybody's talking about the people who come off of Hillside and take a right into Fuddruckers there? I was there when they first put that in. That gate was supposed to be closed and only open to trucks to go in and deliver. It wasn't supposed to be a drive-through to that lot. Now, the town dropped the ball on that one and left the gate, that gate has never been closed. Has never been closed. But it was supposed to be closed to keep the traffic off of Hillside. So I mean, if you're using that as an example, that's a bad example. That's an example that the town did not follow through on their promise. Thank you.
And just to be clear, we're, right now, again, we're talking about a zoning change that would allow particular, do you have a second?
Yeah.
To allow particular types of uses and potentially the projects that's being discussed. But anything, again, have to come back for the specifics when we're talking curb cuts and things like that. That would all be worked out later on if this was. Okay, so Gene, so I think the board is supportive of supporting a town warrant article on this. So what are our next steps for that?
Draft it up.
Okay. And do we, would we set a public hearings on that now or once it's drafted?
Once it's drafted.
Once it's drafted and we've discussed it and?
So zoning public hearings are required in the warrant article.
Okay.
In the past, we've held the public hearings in the month of April and the first meeting in May. There's been a little bit of conflict there in terms of making recommendations and taking time.
Let's do it a little earlier on.
If you were to move that forward, it would be the two public hearings in March and the first in April. The warrant is typically printed for the second week of April.
So if we have a draft warrant article beginning of February, we can discuss it at our February meetings and then have public hearings in March and make recommendations in April.
So the zoning public hearing needs to be noticed in the Tribune for two consecutive weeks before that March hearing. And at that point, it's usually draft for people who come into the planning department and see the warrant article and state that it's in at that time. We'd hope for it to be as far along as we have it, but, so yeah, so there's a little bit of housekeeping in the backend to make sure that it's noticed in the Tribune two weeks before and that we have materials to show people.
Okay, so that's where we'll start working on that. That'll be the general timeline. Okay, great. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's do Mr. Zarico's potential amendment article to the large estate condominium conversion zoning bylaw.
Another Zarico, yes. Unlike.
Well, can you just, for the record, just introduce yourself again?
Oh, yes. Tom Zarico, 1665 Great Pond Road.
And so I know we've discussed this one, it's just, I, a couple things. I just wanna thank everyone who sent in emails and correspondence regarding this. We've read them all. It's been very helpful in guiding our deliberations. So I just wanted to thank everyone who's provided input. Tom, can you just tell us anything, I mean, give it just a two-minute, well, I'll give it one-minute synopsis. The proposal is for, from the owners of the, what is it, the printing museum, which is the historic society, to convert that through a zoning change to the potential for townhomes. That's the eight townhomes. That's a general proposal. We've had multiple meetings about this, so why don't you tell us, is there anything new that you want to present?
No new technical information. I wanted to respond to some other, to some comments and provide input and clarification for some things this evening.
So what we'll do is we'll, I'll have you do that and we'll have any public comments. If you need to comment to that comment, I'll have you do that. And then I think we'll have a discussion up here about, about that. Again, the goal for tonight is, if we can, to provide you with our guidance of whether or not we would support this as a planning board initiative and to the extent possible, in what manner, if we do. So, okay, good.
Yeah, just to clarify and expand on.
Can I talk for one second? So it appears that there are people interested in this, in the hall, in this room. I don't know if you wanna step, step in, so you can hear better along the sidewalk. I apologize, there are no more seats, but, or, or people confirm that you can hear the discussion. What do we got?
You can do that.
So there are, there's some standing room two in the back? Oh, yes, if anyone's not interested in this. If you could step out, that would be great.
I just wanted to, at least here.
Yeah, thank you.
Gene, are there any of those chairs we can get and move along the wall there? Are there extra chairs somewhere?
There's none in that room, I assume they bargained them open, so that is a great room right there. Okay, so we have at least two seats that I can say.
You're sliding and leaving your gavel exposed.
I'll get it if necessary.
There's a lot of people in the hallway. How fun.
They don't wanna come stand in here.
I mean, I'd love to have them, I'm getting them to stand around.
Come on, don't be shy.
If you're here to hear this meeting, this planning is standing open here.
Do you want to, everyone who is interested to hear things, we'd like you to come in. Just so that we can make sure everyone has their opportunity. Stand here too, please. Yeah, we got room a little across the back. Can every, can you guys all hear out there?
We can hear right here.
All right. But we have no problem with people standing in here.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. All right, if anyone in the hallway can't hear, please let us know and we'll try to make more accommodations. Thank you, Gene. Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just to elaborate on your comments just a little bit, this request is not for endorsement of the specifics or technical details of this proposal. It's a request to have the planning board sponsor an article, a change to the large estates condominium conversion bylaw in a way that the board is comfortable with that, that will allow this proposed project to proceed and be considered at future meetings. So I don't have, unlike, unlike the previous presentation, there isn't, this project has not really been, this proposal hasn't really been about so much about technical challenges. It's been more about emotional challenges and issues than anything. I'm much better dealing with the technical problems or challenges and speaking to those. But because some of these other issues have been brought up during the public process, I wanted to at least give a couple of minutes of response and comment back to some of the things that have been brought forth through this process, whether they are through letters or the public hearings. One of the things that has gotten a lot of discussion or airtime, if you will, is the legitimacy of the agreement between me and the society. It's been repeatedly questioned by people who've never seen the agreement. And that alone should be more than enough to, at least to some extent, delegitimize that claim. Those who have seen that agreement know of the bold typed second page regarding conditions, concessions, and caveats, which were deliberately included to assure the society of full veto control over not just the aesthetics of the plan, but also over any operational and procedural process that might be required, such as membership consent prior to any transfer. That's been in that agreement at my insistence from the start. The agreement, in fact, gives the society the opportunity to follow process and to continue or withdraw pretty much as they please. So I take exception to some of the comments suggesting that the process has been either seriously flawed or there's been missteps or some kind of a covert sort of a process involved here. If my proposed purchase of the subject property isn't allowed or legitimate, which again, I don't think this is the forum for that discussion, according to properly qualified authorities who are capable of making that judgment, then I won't be purchasing it. And again, that's not for this, for this forum to decide. As far as the society perceiving this project, and I'm not speaking for the society, I'm speaking as the applicant here. As far as the society perceiving this project differently from a project 15 years ago, I think anybody who lives on Academy Road would surely tell you that the character on Academy Road is different from the character of Mass Ave. Otherwise, people who live there would have chosen to live on Mass Ave for equally, equal reasons. The Academy Road proposal years ago was to take an historic wooden purpose-built single-family residence on a peaceful country road with antique stone walls and enlarge and convert it to multiple housing units. This proposal is to take a large commercial or mill-type structure whose purpose no longer exists, located on a heavily trafficked, double-yellow-lined, high-speed connector road, complete with traffic lights and no historic structures, and then shrink the structure and reuse it for multiple housing units, making intelligent use of a still valuable, rock-solid asset which has, at least to some people, iconic presence. Those don't sound like identical projects to me. And so they probably don't deserve identical responses. I just wanted to clarify that. You know, the society is an organization dedicated to maintaining our history and preserving the aesthetic integrity of the, of the common and the old center. So how is keeping the most prominent building in the area, which has been there for all of our lives, looking essentially as it always has, antithetical to that mission? Housing has been a part of this community and of life in this community since the start. Using housing to fund preservation is simply responsible use of valuable resources, just like I've used it to fund parks, playgrounds, ballfields, hiking trails, open space, and parking lots. There's been some design-specific criticism. Again, this is not, this is just a concept at this point. But there has been some feedback about design-specific criticism of. some feedback about design-specific criticism of the concept sketches with references to tiny condos and parking garages. These are proposed to be sixteen hundred to nineteen hundred square foot townhomes. That is only slightly smaller than the average American home, which is just over two thousand square feet. Uh, just because many people in this town live in a five thousand square foot home on two acres doesn't mean that's the only intelligent housing that we either need or want. One of the opponents expressed it this way, and said, very honestly, he said, "I just don't want any more housing in town, there or anywhere." That, to me, is what we're really talking about here. Imagine if my parents, upon settling here seventy years ago, had the good sense to lock the community doors and throw away the key. Most of the people in this room wouldn't be here, including me. It's just not a fair or reasonable attitude to have. I think it's sad when the, when the, the control demographic feels no obligation to allow the next generation to aspire to the same things we did, or, or the previous generation to stick around in a town where they have always, which they've always called their own. That's the kind of housing we're talking about. So, um, again, this is really not about technical issues. It's about what's right and what's fair and what's reasonable to do around the common. I know how sensitive it is to everybody, but I'm asking the board, uh, to not let ten or fifteen homeowners determine, I guess, whether or not a thoughtfully conceived residential plan, and whether it's eight, five, or three, or anything but one unit, which is what it's zoned for there, whether that's appropriate for this building and for this residential area, rather than allowing the greater community to make that decision. I mean, I think this is a big enough issue that it shouldn't be decided by ten or fifteen people. So I'd just like to ask you to please keep an open mind and consider supporting and sponsoring it, so that at least there's a, there's a, there's a path for this building and for the common to conclusion at some point, whether it's this or a better plan. I don't think anybody is opposed, I'm certainly not opposed to, uh, removing myself from the process if there is a better way. And I don't think the Historical Society has any hesitation about, um, considering a better way. Fact of the matter is, this is the only thing that's been proposed in a concrete way, and it's the only thing that's moving the train forward. And if we don't continue to do that, then five years from now, we'll be having the same discussion again, or maybe two years from now. So I think it's important. It doesn't mean that it can't be parallel tracks, and something better, and something more refined, or something that evolves, but I think it's an important part of the process that more than just this room decide. And that's all I had to say.
I just, one, one point. Uh, so you, your proposal currently is for an amendment to the larger state condominium conversion zoning bylaw.
That's correct.
That's not where it originally started, correct? The proposal was originally to change the zoning for this parcel, correct?
Yeah, originally, well, again, we, we, look, look, yes, that's correct. That's correct.
I mean, this has a long history, going back to last year, within the working group, and many different items. But at least when you came forward to us first, you know, in, in, late twenty eighteen, it was changing the zone.
That's correct, and, and.
So, let me just ask about that. If, there, there are a couple different options where we could go, right? The board could just say, "We really don't support this, you know, in any way, however you get there, we just don't support."
Right.
Could say, "Okay, we support a change to the condominium conversion zoning bylaw, not sure how it is, but we support it. We'll write a warrant article on that." We could also say, um, "We're supportive of the idea, but we don't really like changing the condominium conversion zoning bylaw, rather just change the zoning for this particular parcel." As the applicant, is that something you'd be comfortable with?
Absolutely. The, 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 the goal is to, um, preserve and, 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 and find a way to fund the preservation responsibly of this building. So, so however that happens, um, open, open to that discussion. The original proposal to change the zoning, it seemed that there was tremendous resistance and that there was, that was, might open the parcel up to, um, alternative uses or densities or other things that, that we couldn't as easily control.
Yeah, understood. I, I, I think you're definitely coming at this with the, the reminds, I was trying to get the best possible use while limiting, so I, I just want to make sure that everyone has, that those are kind of the options on the table. So if people want to comment on, uh, why we should, should or should not just do this in general, fine. People want to comment specifically about whether or not the condominium conversion bylaw is a good idea, or whether or not changing the zoning for this particular parcel is a good idea. I just want everyone to be able to talk about all of those, because I think we'll discuss all of those. Okay? Great?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, who wants to go first? No comments, all right? Excellent. Seriously, does anyone, I mean, so again, we, well, let me just, let me just, probably, we have received numerous emails, letters, um, both for and against. They've all been really excellent in terms of advocacy and combining information, and, and, uh, we appreciate that. So, if, if you've submitted something and you don't want to just come up and read it, we get that, that's okay. But if you want to add something or say something tonight, we certainly appreciate it, so. Good. Can you introduce yourself, please, and just?
I'm Doug Evans, one fourteen Academy Road.
Okay.
You know, I, I'm pretty empathetic with the plight of the Historical Society in this situation from a financial perspective. You know, and I've been a big supporter of the Historical Society, but the Historical Society has not provided any information on their plans to its members. I think this whole proposal is premature, because there's a lot that needs to go on before the Historical Society can actually enact their proposed plan by selling this property to Tom Zarico. I mean, their bylaws prohibit it. It's pretty clear as day, if you read the bylaws. And to, and the mission of the Historical Society is to preserve the historic district. I mean, I can't think of a project that is more diametrically opposed to their mission than this. I get the fact that it's mitigated by financial circumstances, but that, that doesn't make it right, and it doesn't make it, he, adhere to their, their mission and their focus. And so I don't think the planning board should consider this until the Historical Society gets their ducks in order and knows that they can actually do this, because they've got some work to do. I mean, I do think this could get very ugly if it proceeds, uh, from a legal perspective, and to actually, uh, uh, change the zoning laws before you know that that can happen doesn't make sense.
It's, it's, it's a good point, but to play devil's advocate, how would any of this happen if there wasn't a zoning change? Why would you buy the property if the zoning change didn't happen? So.
Well, I don't follow that.
No one's going to buy the property to convert it if there's not going to be a zoning change?
But, yeah, but we're not, we, we don't change the zoning to make deals happen.
Well, we change the zoning to make a.
I mean, zoning, zoning rules exist for a purpose.
Right, to, to give landowners use of their property and to protect the public interest.
Correct.
And those are the two things we're balancing, so I think that's.
The deal that Mr. Zarico would have would obviously be contingent of the zoning change. He would buy the property without a zoning change. I mean, that, that's a condition of any deal that you would ever do, that is subject to a final approval.
But also, according to the, the master plan, that, like, I've been going through it, the whole historical section does support what the gentleman's saying in regards to the preservation of the building, and really not being able to sell it or develop it with the bylaws that are in place right now.
I just think it's premature.
Yeah.
Let the Historical Society get their, their ducks in order here before you guys start making, making it easy for them to, to do something that they may not have the authority to do.
I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole section of it in our master plan that just got approved that does correlate to the Historical Society not preserving, even in twenty thirteen, they estimated the repairs at a million and a half back then, but now we're in twenty nineteen. So they've known the building's been, you know, in disarray, and that is their responsibility. That's, is their mission. And it, there was not an historical building by age, it is by, by function. You know, it's a historical piece to the town, and, you know, I, I support to the development, but I also think that, um, it needs to be repurposed. And I don't know if any of the Historical Society folks are here tonight.
No, they aren't, I guess.
Yeah.
But, right, so, so let, I mean, I guess that, that's a, a big point, but to what end? I think that was part of the whole discussion with the working group, was, is there a way to repurpose it? As far as I know, today, we haven't had any, other than this proposal. So that's, that's the issue. But the other thing I would say is that, um, Mr. Evans talks about, you know, waiting and could there be a worse use? I mean, I mean, some people, I think, would argue that a single-family, five thousand foot's post-modern, new modern home would be completely out of character, which could be done pretty much, I think, as of right, right now, right? A single-family home.
You have to, you start with the industry. You know, if you look at the, uh, houses where the traffic light is.
Yeah.
Those are the houses they originally started and get the approval.
Okay, so, so there are some limitations.
There are some.
Some limitations. Okay, all right, so, so that's, I mean, so that's, that's good to know and to consider.
Okay, you know, to, to your point that you just made about, you know, waiting or not, I mean, I'm also a member of the Historical Society, um, so I've gotten a letter that there's gonna be a meeting of the members.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know of any date of when that's going to happen, and, you know, the letter, I think, said there'd be a meeting for a vote. And, I mean, to my mind, everything we've been talking about so far is on the premise of, um, potential project based on the sale of the project to Tom Zarico.
Correct.
So, we make a change, we, we sponsor a change, and, uh, close the process, and we've voted, and then the Historical Society meets, and they have a vote, and they say no.
And then don't we just withdraw it from town meeting?
I, I just think it's a backwards process. I think that, um, I think it is not only not unreasonable, I think it's entirely reasonable. This board and the working group have invested a lot of time and effort and thought to try to help support a solution. And I know the Historical Society has invested years, and as I said at the last meeting, I think they're really in a, a very challenging and somewhat compromised position here. But I think it's very reasonable to have the expectation that the Historical Society needs to call a vote, and I would like to see what the vote is before this board acts.
Before this board acts, how though? So, before we give our perspective on what we think of the project, or before we take a vote off?
Because we, we have a time. Before we take a vote.
So, I, I think getting a better sense of where things are going to come out is imperative.
I mean, I just think, could we have a remedy if we acted and then they vote, and the vote was no? Could there be a remedy? Perhaps there's a remedy, and I, I think that's a very fair point, but I'm, I'm just not prepared to take a position on this until I hear what the Historical Society votes on, on this. I'm, I'm glad we're having discussions, and by the way, I'm not only appreciative of people who've written, I'm very appreciative of people who are here through this meeting, standing in the hall. We've only seen this once before, in my time on the board, this type of public interaction, and thank you very much, it makes a big difference.
So, I agree that I'm premising my thoughts on that they will, that they have the authority to do what they say they're going to do. I think I always assumed that the owner, proponent, has the legal authority to do what they say they're going to do, so if it turns out that they don't agree, I don't know how, we can necessarily, we have to be careful on that, so.
I think we have to be careful, but my own view is that I'm not prepared to act until I see what the vote is.
Okay. And, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Michelle Saracusa of the Tonton Endover Street. I've been a member of the Historical Society for over twenty years. When I moved into town nineteen ninety-five, first thing I did was join the Historical Society, because they're a beautiful, old center. The way, the uniqueness, or how many years it's been like that, and how important it was to me and to everybody, a lot of people in this town and people before us. In the last, well, couple months, November thirteenth was the first letter I'd received from the Historical Society, talking about looking at proposals of their property around the surrounding community. Very generic, I have a general sense. My second letter, more detailed, with that picture that, you know, shown on the screen, of the proposal and the only offer that they had received, I mean, number, may be number sixteen, house, uh, 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 citizen of North Andover who objects to this whole way this is being done. And I agree. I read that letter several times, and there's no mention about when the meeting is, but they're going to have a meeting to have it voted. What I don't understand is why we're even discussing changing the, the, the old center and the, and the bylaws of the old center district before, A, we even look at what is the, the, um, Historical Society's really doing and bringing up to their members. The other thing, and if you remember back in probably about ten years ago, how the town went very upset when they started tearing down the trees at the corner of Osgood and Mass Ave, and the Historical Society was very adamant about how those two houses could be designed to keep within the footprint of the old center, which is the pride and joy of this town, North Andover. And I, I don't see exactly why we have to go ahead and, and even entertain condos and changing that footprint. You look around the center, walk around, we've all walked around many times, and you look at all the single homes, the colonials, all the historical houses. Why do we even look at creating condos in a building that was, I was told, built in nineteen sixty-one? Okay? It was deeded property years before, okay? Has no value, has been there. It was put up by the textile mill when the Historical Society gave them the land. Okay? That's when that house went up. Why not deed it back to the town? We could use some open space in this organ, in this, in this town, especially in the old center. I mean, that is our pride and joy. We have built so much around, we talked about Turnpike Street. Why are we disturbing something that our founders, fathers have put in place? Historical Society has supported it for over almost a hundred years, and we're going to turn around just to save a building? Why not open it up? Okay? Put nothing greens. I mean, we have nice concerts on the old center. Why do we want to change the footprint of North Andover when we have done it many times? Look at the Stevens Estates. The town bought it. Okay? We knew we did not want eighty-nine houses, okay, on the Stevens Estates. I don't understand why we're even discussing this for an article at this point when it's really, you know, needs to be looked at and really thought through of what the whole purpose of the old center is all about. Thank you.
I'm Gerald Brecker, four eighty-eight Pleasant Street. I have a letter I would like to give to the board. I'll, uh, I'll paraphrase. I just, what the last speaker said, talking about changing the footprint. The whole essence of this plan is to not change the footprint. I don't understand how people can look at a plan which doesn't change the footprint at all and say that it changes the footprint. It just changes what goes on inside a building that's been here since, it's not really historic, but it's in the historic area, and the architect made some effort to build it in a colonial Georgian-type style, but nothing about the building is changing, other than what goes on inside it. And I believe, uh- And I believe that people with a lot at stake here, who've got long history in the town, have pointed out that back in the day when there was a more active textile museum, there were a lot more people in that building every day, working, more cars parked there, et cetera. So the notion that somehow eight dwelling units inside a building that's been there since nineteen sixty-one changes anything is, I think, fanciful. And regardless of how people live on Academy Road, which is a gorgeous, beautiful street, and so what, they don't want someone living down the hill from them? I don't think that's a great look for the town, is to have people on Academy Road telling other people that they can't live down the hill from them. I don't, well, Mr. Evans, you're the one who said it.
That's.
So, so, but in any event, I think that the, that this is a, the process discussion about the Historical Society, I think, is worthwhile. I'm not sure that there's a cart or a horse here. I think that the developer needs to have some sense as to whether or not there's a prayer of getting this rezoned to make this possible. My take, as a member of this Historical Society, is simply that this is the best way to support the Historical Society and its mission. It maintains the historic character of the town, at least since nineteen sixty-one, it's been the historic character of that part of the town. And therefore, because nothing is changing except what goes on inside, that this project is not objectionable. Is there some other project that somebody could propose that would provide the same support for this Historical Society? We haven't heard it. We haven't heard it. The same zoning issues would likely come up, no matter what anyone proposed. The zoning would have to be changed one way or the other. And whatever objections there are to this project, which doesn't change the building, only changes what goes on inside it, the same objections would be heard from the same neighbors. Obviously, the notion can't be that we're against residential uses around the common, since many, if not most, of the objectors live in houses that are around the common. So obviously, living around the common is not objectionable. It's, it's what, that there's, is condo a dirty word? Is there eight units? Is there some other number of units that would be less objectionable? I don't know. But it's all going on inside, and therefore, it doesn't change the character. To the extent it supports the Historic Society, that's a worthy thing to do. And therefore, as I say, I have no objection to this project. And, and the notion that across the street from the common and next door to the trustees' land, we somehow have a, an open space deficit in the common, that's risible. And so, I don't, I don't know what the real objection is. I think it's aesthetics. I've heard that from some people who object to this project. They think somehow the wrong kind of people will move in there, they'll, they'll do certain things in their units. We don't, we don't want any of that. I don't know. But I don't think that's proper for the board, the planning board, to get involved in. I think the planning board should just look at, is this an appropriate use for this property to allow people to live in a building that's always been there? To me, that's, that's a very simple question, and that is appropriate for the board to decide. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need to.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. We're gonna let, so we're gonna let everyone who wants to speak, who hasn't spoken, go first, then we can do seconds.
Susan Hallmeyer, ninety Herrick Road. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Historical Society. And you all have my letter, and you know how I feel. The building has to remain in place for various, a lot of important reasons to me.
Can I ask you a question for you?
Yes.
Do you know when a vote will take place for approximately?
Well, we've recently had a surge in new people joining the society. I'm not sure why that is, but in any case, we are in the process of processing all those memberships and therefore trying to find a time that could accommodate all of these new members. Our normal meeting space isn't very large, and in fact, we very rarely get many people come to an annual meeting, ever. So this will be something quite remarkable when the date actually gets scheduled. Our next meeting of the Board of Directors is on the twenty-third of January. So I'm sure it will be on the agenda at that time.
That's why I would just, I think to Peter's point and to point the.
Absolutely, absolutely. But, but to the, to the woman who just spoke and the member of the Historical Society since she moved here. Just so you understand, and you all know because you're all part of it, we've had a chicken and an egg situation of people being interested possibly in a business use, which would have required a more substantial zoning change to business from residential, which it is right now. When we brought that to the planning board last spring, that's when the working group was formed to discuss all the possibilities, because that idea was just, nobody liked the idea of changing to business. So before we could take it to the membership, we were into the working group sessions, which were held over the summer, and I attended some of them, but not all of them. And, and then when we came back in the fall, and Mrs. Zarico came forward with his proposal, and it also was going to require a zoning change. So again, we have a chicken and egg situation of, do we get the idea of whether the zoning change will be possible, whether it makes sense to move forward with Mrs. Zarico's proposal and bring it to the membership if we're not gonna get any support on the change in the zoning? But to say that we've been derelict, we haven't been. We've been, since the printing museum left and left the building in bad repair, we have spent many, many society hours and funds to put in pumps, to repair windows, and to do as much as we can to stabilize the interior of the building so it will not deteriorate any further. That requires restoring electricity to the building, which the printing museum had turned off when they left, which meant some pumps weren't running, there was no heat. And so, we did put in an amount of both time and money to stabilize the building's physical situation. I believe you all have toured the building. So, I'm here to say that, basically, what Mr. Brecker said, which is, the building is an iconic part of the common, it deserves to remain in place. Caroline Stevens built it to be a remembrance of her family's mills, which, as I said in my rather sentimental letter, was a part of my childhood, walking by the mills when they were operating, when I walked to get the school bus to go to school, just from the first grade, that's all. And I, I saw it be torn down, she built the building. The bell from, that called the workers of their shifts is in the, in the cupola of that building. And for me, it needs to remain in place. It's part of the common. The common itself was only deeded to the town in nineteen fifty-nine. So the common and the building are part and parcel of the same thing. And we don't, we can't consider something that would take the building down. Therefore, since as it stands, it can't be used except for possibly a single-family home, because no museum would have failed in that place, why would a third one even consider it? And there's not enough foot traffic for it. And again, if it did succeed, it would be full of cars and people, and that's what we're objecting to, is cars and people and traffic there. So, as much as I would like to see it still be the textile museum that it was originally built to be, that's not a possibility. And so we're working from a set of second best. And for me, having people living in the building, which, as Mr. Brecker also said, and as I said in my letter, housing is what surrounds the common. There is multifamily housing units right there in the old center, across from the brick store. And it would not be at all out of place with all the current uses around the common. And so I respectfully ask you not to delay. This happened last year, we were ready to go to town meeting last year with the business zoning proposal, and we agreed to delay, and we spent the summer in the working group. And now we're facing the same kind of timing issue in terms of having warrant articles ready for this year's town meeting. And any delay in this chicken and egg or situation, it would be very much more helpful if we could have knowingly would have the support for what Mrs. Zarico is asking in terms of changing the bylaw. So therefore, when we go to the membership, we can say, this indeed is a proposal that can come to fruition if you support it, instead of the other way around. Thank you.
And so, I just do wanna reemphasize, 'cause I'm, when I think about all of this, thinking about it as if you have the permission to do this. If you don't, as Peter said, then yeah, this may all be for naught. So I would, don't like to tell you what to do, but I'm going to anyway. You need to get a meeting soon.
Okay.
With everyone. And, and it's not just, and don't just send letters out to people.
Well, no, I probably, I understand, I understand.
Call them. Make sure everyone has as much, as much knowledge as possible in advance of when the meeting's gonna be. Get a big space, and make it as transparent as possible. Because I've received notifications from people in support from your society. I've received people against from your society. The last thing I think we want is for people to come back and say, I didn't know that that meeting happened, I would have voted for, I would have voted against it. You just gotta make, go overboard in, in the mail. And clear, and bring everyone and have the discussion, and come back to us and tell us this is how our members voted, and as a board, we have the authority to do X, we have the authority to do Y, but we're gonna need that at some point.
Well, you probably, probably won't need to be told from probably reading the paper the day after it happens. But, okay, thank you very much.
All right.
I'll be brief.
Are you sure?
I'm sure, I'm sure, I actually edited down my notes in all the time.
Yeah, it's written down ten times, be brief, be brief.
Brad Wakeman, I guess I'm one of those people that live on Academy Road. Jerry doesn't like, one forty Academy Road. Thanks again for the opportunity to comment. And again, I don't like speaking against something the Historical Society is doing or that Tom is proposing, because I've admired their work and Tom's integrity. But let me give you some reasons why we should slow down. This is not a historic structure, and many of us don't think it's particularly iconic, and it's not in need of preservation. While it's become familiar over years, I think condos in the common will change the historic colonial atmosphere of the old center, adding cars and more artificial light to our historic common. And it's just not me saying so, and I think it's relevant with the Historical Society said in two thousand and six, when one fourteen Academy Road was going to be converted. They said the proposed and perhaps precedent-changing, I'm sorry, precedent-setting changes would change the character of the historic neighborhood. The facade of one fourteen Academy Road wasn't going to change when Bill Barrett was going to develop it. Yet today, the Historical Society is not only supporting condos in the old center, they're, they're proponents of putting it and right on the common. So why, why now? I mentioned before, we need to be looking a hundred years ahead. You know, I don't worry about Tom, I worry about future Toms. Small condo associations may be filled with conflicts, that's gonna put the fabric of the building at risk. We may be hearing, you can't put that banner out there, that derelict car has been unregistered and hasn't moved in a year, we're only gonna re-roof half the roof. I think you get the point. So we should be asking ourselves, what is this gonna look like a hundred years from now? I worry about light pollution. Tom has said the condo complex will only use dark sky. I had to look that up on internet lighting, which means it reduces the skyglow. And if Tom says it, it will. But what happens when there's some event in the future, a slip and fall, a theft, when the unit owners make a very compelling case to us that we need to add floodlighting to the parking and it's facing the common? And due to safety concerns, it may be hard for those holding the restrictions on it to say, no. And that may diminish the historic feel of our common. Again, we need to be thinking not about today, but a hundred years ahead. Tom is a great developer and a man of integrity. But if this goes through, there's no guarantee that Tom is gonna take it from beginning to end. It could, you know, it could happen that somebody else takes it through. When I, I live in the old center, and what I hear, when, so what do people want from the old center? If you ask them about the old center, I expect you're gonna hear them talk about the common and about the Stevens Coolidge Place, and about the Historical Society's Johnson Cottage, maybe Academy Road. Many will say there's too much traffic, particularly in the morning, not enough parking. But you're not gonna hear people say, if you say, gee, what do you want for the old center? They're not gonna say, gee, I think we want condos. And dozens of people, not just from the old center or Academy Road or on the common, dozens of people from all over town have expressed displeasure with this plan. So what I suggest is that we not move forward, that we wait for the membership of the Historical Society to approve this. They just learned about this a few days ago. So we've been talking about this forever. But for the membership, this is, this is a new entry, this is out of the blue. And so the Historical Society is going to send out a mailing and invite people to a meeting. I have asked the Historical Society, and others have too, that they allow kind of both sides to present. Here's the arguments for condos in the common, and here's the arguments against it. I hope they, I hope they do that. So let's, let's wait for that meeting, let's wait for them to make sure that this deal can actually go through. And let's allow more time to consider less intrusive plans. I've mentioned the reserve lot for a historic house, we're about to tear down a house on Salem Street, maybe that could go there, alternative museum spaces, or creating open space. And this notion of creating open space, I've written to you about, has been done here before in North Andover. We cleared houses and other structures to create the common. And one of my favorite stories about creating open space relates to Carolyn Stevens Rogers and involves Wire Hill. In nineteen seventy-three, the hayfields across the street from Wire Hill were being developed into houses. This is the field between Osgood Street and Stevens Street, between the Samuel Osgood House and what is now the Wire Hill parking lot. Anyway, in that field, houses were being built, the foundations were in place, the cellars were in place, the framing was going up, and people moved quickly to prevent what they called a traditionally unimaginative development. The trustees and other civic leaders, including Carolyn Stevens Rogers, viewed this housing development as inappropriate, writing, "A dense subdivision would not only have destroyed the character of the area, but would have also jeopardized the integrity and tranquility of the Wire Hill reservation just across the street." So the houses were torn down, and the small parcel is now part of a larger parcel, Wire Hill, and preserves the historic role character of North Andover today. And they did this by tearing down the houses. And if you drive by it today, I'm told the cellar holes are still there, just filled in with dirt. So I love this story, and I share it with you for obvious reasons. I believe a dense condominium development could harm the character, integrity, and tranquility of our town common just across the street. Perhaps not next year, or in five years, or in ten years, or in twenty years, but in a hundred years, which is where I think we need to be looking. So I think we all should pause and take a, the harder, long view.
So, I guess the, you make some, I, every time you've been up, you've made some really.
I hope never to come up again.
You said, I hope. So I guess the one thing I'm struggling with is the pause. So let's assume that in February, there's a meeting of the Historical Society, everyone comes, everyone presents, and there's a vote, okay? The vote is, we don't wanna go forward with this proposal. Okay, so that's, that's done. Now, if the vote is, we go forward with the proposal, now if we had paused here, we wasted a month. And I assume there'll still be some people that object and go through that whole process of public hearing and things like that. So I guess I'm just not seeing the benefit, at least for this board, to wait. I think, at least, again, I said, I would assume that you get the approval. If there's not, then yeah, so we discussed it for a month, and it didn't happen, so be it. If there is, then at least we've already started the public hearing process and all the actual processes that we need to go through for potential zoning article at town meeting. And again, the app, the article going to town meeting, if it's defeated, runs the risk of not being able to come up again for a few years. So there are definitely things to think about for that going forward. I, I guess I just, when this is, this came up last year, I agree. When this came up last year, we said, wait, come up with something, see what you could find, come up with something better. And I kinda feel like that's been done. Now, for some people, it may not be good enough, and it may never be good enough. I, I'm just not sure that continuing to wait to see what happens is necessarily the best approach. So just, that's just where I'm kind of, my head's at.
I hear, I hear that. I would add that in, you know, last year at about this time, when you, when you said, let's pause, and you sent them back. And I, I don't remember the language exactly, but I watched the meeting again. That's how pathetic it is that I'm watching the year-old meetings. But I watched the meeting again, and you said, find some use for the property where people could be inspired and gather consensus. I don't think that's happened. You can't, the Historical Society can't say, we've done it, we've gathered consensus, when they just told their members a few days ago. So, so yes, you told them to pause a year ago, but you also gave them some other instructions that, you know, I think, I think they might agree with me, that they would say, no, not, not yet, anyway. Have we, have we, have we, we're working on it, but we haven't gathered consensus.
I'm gonna say, I appreciate your comments and everybody's comments, and this is a really tricky issue for a lot of people. But I, I share your concern, just based on what I've learned as a member of the board over the past year and a half, that when we're dealing with tricky issues, there is a benefit to us as a board to start talking. dealing with tricky issues, there is a benefit to us as a board to start talking about it early and often, and move along the process. And if, the Historical Society absolutely needs to take a vote and make a decision, because otherwise, there's no reason to move forward. But, if it's going to take a month for them to take a vote, I don't want to be a month behind, and then have us run into the same problems where we're putting Jean and Monica through a crazy situation, and trying to get something ready for town meeting, if that's where we end up. And so, I'm really hesitant from a process standpoint for us to stand back, although I do very strongly encourage the Historical Society to work through their process quickly, but with all fairness for everybody who wants to be heard.
Well, I mean, it's interesting, because if you remember reading him when you talked at the beginning of the night about the decision we're making, at this point, it's really considered whether to help sponsor an article or not. And if you take in this case, let's assume, there's so many different permutations, the past we could go down here, but to force him everything else, we could choose not to sponsor the article, and the applicant can put out a proposal, and it could, and I think that, you know, in many respects, the situation on this is different than the situation in the last one, because I think the last one was more technical, I think there was a general consensus of the direction of the board, although we had to work out positions. I don't think this board is in consensus on this, I think there's significant disagreement. And the question is, are we better served to sponsor something when we have clear differences of opinion, or whether we just let the chips ride? I mean, if somebody's welcome to put in a zoning article on their own if they want, and if we said we weren't going to do it, they would do that anyway. And that, I think, is what we really have to decide.
I think there's a structural issue with this anyway. If you was, I know there's been a lot of talk about the disrepair of this building, but the fact is that the Historical Society has an asset, they want to keep it, but they're very limited. If that building were in great shape, there's still very limited uses to that building. If they wanted to do something else, the zoning issue's still there. They're really limited to what it's been in the past, really a museum, not too much else. So, there's a structural issue, I think it behooves this board to stay on track, and talk this through over the coming months.
Well, I think we should talk it through, I think the question at one level is, because we're going to do it anyway, I think the question becomes really, what position, if any, of the board can take on this? And I, my belief is given that, I think there's some strong disagreements on it, it wouldn't be a good idea for us to take an official position on drafting an article, sponsoring an article, and we're not in consensus on it.
Isn't that putting the cart before the horse? I mean, aren't you saying, because I don't foresee that we're ever going to agree on anything, we should never pick it up anyway? I don't think that's really the rule.
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, how can we sponsor an article for town meeting when we don't have general consensus among the board that it's a good thing to do? Usually, you know, anytime we do something that's, hey, we think this is a good idea, it makes sense, there's, we may have disagreements on individual pieces of it, but the basic concept, the basic idea of what we're doing, I don't have a number of, you know, cases where that, that's been settled.
And it's an interesting point, but I kind of see it more as, is the parcel and property that we're talking about one of such importance that we need to take a position? And whether it's a divided position or not, I think this property is. I think that's why there's such strong opinions, I think that's why.
But it's a big difference between the planning board standing behind something, and sponsoring it itself, than working with an applicant on their proposal. It's either, do we want this to be a citizen petition, or do we want this to be a planning board petition? I think there's a difference.
I agree, I just feel we have more control over a, like, so, I guess jumping a little bit ahead, I don't like the idea of changing the condominium conversion zoning bylaw at this point. I actually think we missed something we should look at in the future, because there may be different places in town where it is appropriate, because reuse really is an important thing that we should be discussing, because I've lived in a converted schoolhouse which was turned into condominiums, and this was in a city, and it was beautiful. And I think that kind of reuse is really important. It doesn't fit squarely in North Andover a lot of places, but it's something we should look at. But I don't like changing this and not knowing what the implications are in changing that particular bylaw. If we're talking about changing the zoning of this particular parcel, which has an effect on the common, I think that's our, our role, is to talk it out, and figure it out, and take a vote, and whatever way that vote comes out, I don't think it needs to be 5-0 or 4-1, I just think it needs to, I think that's our job, and it's a hard job, especially in this case, but I think that's our role, divided or not, so, just, whatever. Why don't we go back to the, go back to the people?
Okay. Diane Huster, 279 Winter Street, I'm a board member of the Historical Society since 2003, and I'm sitting here and listening to you, and a couple things. It is an iconic building, the planning board should be involved with it, the society needs your help. I don't know if the, what you just said about changing the conversion thing is the right way to go, but I don't know what the right way to go to allow it to have condos. I want you to tell us how to do that properly, so that we're not affecting something somewhere else in town that we don't know about, because you're the professionals. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, we, there's all this about when we were, such a hurry, we didn't know about any of this. I guess I want to say, you know, 10 members of the board, working over the last 20 years, different members, in fact, many members who opposed this have walked to that building, have seen the finances of the society be hurt by the fact, A, we weren't collecting rent, B, we had to spend money on it. They know the issues there. We had a working group, you met all over the summer, I wasn't here for it. You couldn't come up with anything, except, it seems like residential, apparently was at the last meeting. And then, Tom, very gratefully on our part, came up with a scenario that would work, that would minimize any impact. Everyone has to remember, the society is going to be living next to this building. When we were looking at, what are we going to do with this, we're right next, we're very close, right next door. So, what are the kinds of uses? White-collar office minimized, you know, doctor's offices with lots of people coming and stuff like that. Not just for us, we didn't want all that, but for the neighbors, because when I was on the school board, traffic in the 90s was the principal problem, traffic and parking, trying to get it used for school offices. So, it came down to residential. Now, there's, this group has another idea, they want to tear it down. We have spent the last 20 years trying to preserve that building, let a museum have it for free rent. That didn't work too well. But condos are townhomes, I keep wanting to keep saying, at the value they're going to be selling at, will be kept up. There's too much investment by the owners to let that go, to wreck and ruin, just like your home at that price, you don't let go, to wreck and ruin. But to tear it down, the same people that are talking about the process, and how are we getting the right amount of money? Are we getting the best value? Is this the highest bid? Are the exact same people who want to tear it down, have us pay for it to tear it down with money we don't have, at a price that is probably surpasses our annual operating budget? But this, this building, the Carolyn Rogers Building was built at the exact same time, and you've all heard this in my letter, but the audience hasn't heard it, was built at the exact same time that she created Center Realty Trust, which bought all the buildings in the old center to save it. And those buildings mostly are multifamily, because the businesses couldn't survive. The Hay Skills Exchange, that is a business now, it's not a restaurant, it's not the gift shop, there was not enough foot traffic, if there was a lot of foot traffic, the neighbors would all complain because there are too many cars because of the foot traffic. So, what are we left with? We're left with housing. Tom has come up with the proper procedure, but it needs to go concurrently. Yes, we're going to have a membership meeting, but chicken/egg problem again. What is it we're going to present to the membership? We didn't even know this idea till October, we're presenting it to you, we're working through December. We'd like, we always planned to have the membership meeting prior to town meeting, we had to. That's, you know, a given, that we had to have that, and have to have that. Do I have a date for that yet? No, we have to get all our information out. Again, we have 10 people working on this that are volunteers. We're not a big, you know, a lot of money to spend on graphics and things like that. We have to get the word out to our membership, we have to have a, we may even have an informational meeting, and then another voting meeting, I don't know, we haven't figured that out yet. But I'm looking for your help, as to what's the right zoning. When we figure that out, then we'll be able to tell our membership exactly what, how it's going to happen, and what are the protections. But I don't know how we can have that meeting till we know how it's going to be done. So, looking for your guidance, looking for your help, and I will just leave you, you've read it, but they haven't heard it. Carolyn Stevens Rogers, she was a preservationist and benefactor. She was a volunteer nurse in France near the front lines during World War I, and her name is on Memorial Park, World War I Memorial. In 1955, she remained a Historical Society member. We have here, right in their original locations, the embodiment of our forefathers, a precious possession to which we have paid little attention. That sort of describes the Carolyn Rogers Building, it's been sitting there. The Carolyn Stevens Rogers Building is our precious possession, it's a part of the fabric of the community, standing there for almost 60 years, a testament to community values. And I'm hoping you can help us do the right thing, we can tell our membership, this is the right thing, and how to do it, and why. Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet that wants to speak? And then, if anyone who has spoken and wants to come back up, you can, but, I know, but I don't think you need to, I don't think you need to, I'm not inviting. We do have other things on our agenda, too.
I'll make a quick, hi, Bob Curtin, 28 Phillips Common.
Sorry, Jesus.
Good timing.
What? It's a flip phone, I tried to shut, I apologize.
See?
Sorry.
You like Historic?
I, I'm very big, sorry, sorry, my son yells at me, but anyway. No, based on the money that I guess they put in to refurbish the old center and stuff like this, and based on my latest tax bill, I don't understand why we don't take Community Preservation Act money, and, you know, find, either the building is good, they can do something with the building, use money from there, do what you have to do to the building, or take money from there, knock the building down, plant trees, sell it for a dollar to the trustees of reservations. I mean, that's, I just-
Well, it's an asset that's owned by the Historical Society, it's not for us to say-
Well, I-
From Community Preservation, it's up to them to request such-
Well, I- Oh, okay, but I mean, well, the building may not be old enough, but Community Preservation Funds are used to build new housing, and that's not old, it's new. So, I don't want to get into the community, I just, to me, if they invest a lot of money in the old center, okay, so, why don't they take money and figure out how to, you know, either make something of this building, or get rid of it, and do a deal, I mean, do a deal with it, I mean, the Historical Commission, I mean, to me, and I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, it's the town, if the Historical Commission owns it, the town owns it.
No, that's separate, that's separate.
So, they have, so that's not the case.
Yeah, it's a private ownership.
It's a private ownership, okay, all right, but I mean, to me-
No, it's a good point.
I'm just saying, do something, we got all, we got all this money, okay? Cut it, well, hey, I just got this new tax bill, we got plenty of money.
I think John just spent $7 million on fields.
Okay? You know, cut a deal with those people, okay, and preserve it. But, I mean, the idea that, you know, it's not a 200-year-old building, all right, you know, there's nothing wrong, to me, if you have to knock it down, you knock it down and plant trees, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, hi. Sorry, I apologize.
I'm Antonia Makin, I live at 36 Andover Street, in one of the old houses on the common. It faces the common, and it also looks at the 800 Mass Ave Building. I am a former Historical Society trustee, a former Historical Society member, and I've lived in the house for 20 years. I've watched this building become more and more and more derelict. I am in favor of your help in getting the Historical Society to get out of its own way, and move forward in some sort of adaptive reuse of this building. I think the proposal that has been made is the best one by far anybody's made in 20 years, and it could be quite exciting. It also satisfies, without reiterating everything, all of the facade and not changing the look of the common, that the whole historic area, much. So, I would urge you not to pause and wait for the Historical Society. I think, if I'm not mistaken, the Historical Society Board has voted to go ahead to do this, so it seems that they are willing and moving themselves forward towards, I guess, taking the legal steps that they need to do to sell this and separate it from their property, and I think that they will go ahead. I guess I could become a member again, just to vote for this, and I think there's a danger at all of this, but, and that's almost like buying votes, so I think, I would urge you-
Well, to the extent that, because a member and a steward get raised, we might sell-
You know, I would urge you to go ahead, I've followed all of your conversations and your meetings through this, and I'm really glad to hear all of the discussion on it, it's very refreshing, it's wonderful. This building has not had power, one Halloween was particularly great, because all of the strobe lights were going off inside, all of the emergency lights were going off because there was no electricity. It would be really great to have this building be back and be part of the community, rather than being the eyesore that it is now. Thank you.
You know, I hate to do this, but I'm going to talk.
So, hold on, no, no, you can come up, you can come up, you got one minute, you got one minute, one minute, one minute.
I think this really boils down to, is this building iconic? Is saving this building a much greater mission than tearing it down? And, you know, I do see on the board of the Historical Society, just, I mean, their priority is saving this building, and they're calling it iconic, it's not a historical building, it's not within their mission as a society. Their mission is, you know, the, you know, preservation of the historic district. And, you know, I disagree with the gentleman that accused me of living on Academy Road, who stated-
One at a time, please.
I disagree that this is going to totally be unchanged. I mean, you're calling this facade that isn't used, which has no traffic and everything, an eyesore, yet you're going to say, you're going to put eight condominiums in there, and the appearance of it is going to be unchanged, and it's not going to affect, you know, the town green at all. Well, you know, there will be lighting in a- Nowadays, you know, disabled access and all of the requirements that go along with building housing are gonna increase lighting, traffic, you're gonna have to be able to get a, you know, fire truck in and around that building. It's going to change the presence of that building on the green dramatically. So I strongly disagree with the gentleman who said that it's gonna be, you know, unchanged at all. It will increase the traffic. It will increase the lighting. It will increase the appearance. And it will be inconsistent with the historic district as it stands now and with everything the town has invested in creating that green. The town has done a magnificent job with that green and this will take it in a different direction.
Thank you. So I think we'll talk about it now, to the extent that people... I still think we should, I think we should give our input to the applicant about whether or not we would support any type of warrant article. If people are not prepared to do that, then that's okay. You can say that. But I'd like for anyone who is ready to do that, I'd like you to kind of talk about where you're at and what you're thinking. If there's more information that you want, let us know. But I think we at least deserve it to everyone who's made the effort to come out and tell us their positions about where we stand at this point. Because wherever we go, there is a lot of process left, so. John, do you want to start?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's any surprise that this is a use that I've been skeptical about from the start. I mean, again, to relate some of the comments, I admire Mr. Zeriko Ziel in doing this. I trust his integrity as a developer. But I think the impact on the Common would be too great. It's not a use that I support. Therefore, I would, even if we came up with an article, if it's a claim unless I've seen something different, I would vote against it.
Do you have any thoughts if there were an article? Even if you voted against both the condominium change or a rezoning? Do you think there's one that's better than the other, just in general?
Well, I mean, I don't think changing the large estate thing works at all.
All right, all right. Then I appreciate the input. Okay. Jennifer?
So, I think regardless of what you think of the particular proposal, I think as Erin said earlier, this is a really important piece of our town. And if there's any consideration of changing some part of the zoning bylaw that's going to impact our town common, I think the planning board ought to be involved. And so, well, I think there are really valid points on all sides of the positions, all the different positions that people have brought to us. And many of the people on both sides of this issue have been very persuasive. I don't know how I'm gonna come down on it yet, but I don't think that we, as a planning board, should be pencils down on this because I think it is a fundamental part of our town where there is a zoning issue that's been going on for a really long time. We pushed them for a year. We asked them to go do some more work and come back to us. They've come back to us. I think we owe it to the Historical Society and to the town to dig in ourselves and keep moving along. That said, I'm hesitant to go too far down the road on this without the Historical Society starting to move in tandem and making, getting a decision. I don't know the ins and outs of what the Historical Society needs to do in order to be in a position to move forward with this project. I don't know if board votes enough, if they need membership support, what that is. But what I've heard tonight from different people is enough to raise some red flags for me about going too far down the road. And so I think as a planning board, because of the importance of this particular parcel, we should continue our process, but keep our eye on what is happening with the Historical Society and just be very mindful that we're not putting a cart in front of a horse. I think both paths should be moving in tandem.
Which it seems similar to what we did with the marijuana, although we had more technical input. It said, "You keep coming back and keep updating your proposal and tell us all the specs. We're gonna work on our own bylaw and maybe it'll get support, maybe it won't." But we need to do both at the same time.
That's exactly, and I think you raise a good point. I think that in some ways, whatever the decision is, I agree with the comment that was made before that there should be input from, I mean, this is one of our best attended meetings, unless you compare it to last year. But I think it's just like that. I think it's something that deserves more weigh-in than just maybe the group of us and the folks in this room. I think it deserves more daylight. And I do think it's important for us to keep moving it along because if something's going to impact the zoning that around the Common, I would want to have a say in that as a planning board.
Erin?
Well, I start off by thinking, and I've said this before, that this is the Historical Society's piece of property. I think a property owner should have some pretty broad latitude to choose how they want to develop their property. I know it's a sensitive area. And I love the Common. I run around the Common frequently. And it's a part of the town that attracted me when I moved here six years ago, so I'm sympathetic to that. But we have a Historical Society that's willing to, that really wants to keep the structure as is. And in the master plan, we've called out that we really want to do the best we can to promote adaptive reuse of existing structures, whether or not it's historical or not. So I want to keep this process moving forward. I want to try to help the Historical Society. I think something, I think there does need, no matter the condition of the building, if you believe that there can be a future for this building, and that's what they want to pursue, and they have every right to pursue keeping that building intact, that we should try to help them get there, yet do the best we can to protect the interests of the town and the Common, which, you know, everybody, rightfully so, feels is the crown jewel, as has been said. So I want to keep this on the docket. I want to keep exploring. To your point, Ethan, I don't know if it's changing large estate condominium conversion bylaws is the answer. I don't know if it's a rezoning that's the answer, but I want to get into those details and see if there... If we can move a little bit closer. I know there's never gonna be a consensus, but if we can move something, I guess, a little bit more acceptable.
Okay. Lori?
Yep, first of all, I want to thank everybody for the council meetings and, you know, the opinions and consensus around this project. But I guess, from my point of view, the Historical Society, I feel like we're getting lots of mixed messages about kind of how you've approached it and handled the building and then the information that's been brought forward to us. And, you know, my opinion, Historical Society should be able to, you know, come to us, you know, with the appropriate information. And I just feel like there's a lot of kind of confusion in there in how the building's been handled. I, too, you know, have been in town for a while and admire the Common and, you know, the beauty of it and the green space and just feel that, was there any attempts to look outside to bring in, you know, consulting or other ways that you might be able to repurpose, you know, the building?
Can I answer? Can I answer that?
Let me finish quickly. Because other towns around here that also have Historical Societies manage to repurpose buildings. And, you know, I understand this one's, you know, in a lot of mechanical and other infrastructure needs, but I just feel that, you know, it does have significance to the town. And, you know, the proposal for the condos and, you know, maybe that's the only thing that's really been brought forward, but it just seems there might have been other uses that could be explored that might support the Common better and keep to the aesthetic and keep to, you know, the look and feel and, you know, what people admire about, you know, that area so greatly.
Hold on, we're just gonna, we're gonna, Peter?
So I have to say, I love the comment about we should not pencils down while we're sitting in the school administration building. Very vivid. Nightmarish, but vivid. And I actually agree with it. I think it's a great message. This is very important to the town. So our role here is amplified. So I agree we should not be pencils down. But I also share the view that at this point, despite the last year, despite the working group, despite the unanimous view that, you know, Tom's the guy, through his, you know, demonstrated service to the town, seriously, Tom. Despite all that, I also like your use of the term "red flags." And I have some red flags, too. So I agree, we shouldn't put pencils down at this point. But I think in order to conclude, we need sufficient information. You know, all of our decisions have a section. If you look in Planning Board decisions, you'll see in one of the paragraphs, it talks about input, impact on the neighborhood, impact on the area. Does it impact safety? Does it impact other things? That's part of what we're supposed to be doing. And in terms of impact of the area in this key location, you know, I'm a native, but I'm also a newcomer because I moved away for 40 years. The Common is part of what attracted you to this town. Tom, you talked about this being an emotional issue, so sure, we have emotion. But I also think this is an issue of value. And by value, I mean property value, not just historic value. People are attracted to this town because we've managed to preserve this Common, which does not date from 1959 or 1961. That may be the date that it was turned over to the town, but the Common preceded that for a long time in a different form. So what are we preserving? What is the Historical Society preserving? Is it preserving a building or is it preserving the Common? And, you know, we like to maximize use. I totally agree with the idea of reuse. So many great examples. Look at West Mill, right? But sometimes maximizing the use doesn't mean doing more. The reason we have a Common today is because the maximizing the use was to limit use so that that plot of land was not full of activities. And I think the footprint of the building, from what we've seen so far, actually does change because there's an eight-car parking garage. I think the purpose of the building makes a difference. I think you could argue that part of the reason that the building was built was because it was so consistent with the purpose of the Common. What is the Common? It's a place where all members of the town can get use. And that building was built as a place where all members of the town could go use it. That will end once it's private residences. I have nothing against housing, and I think Tom's got a great idea, but it will no longer be part of the Common use of that parcel that attracts people to town and that helps contribute to property values in this town as well as historic values. So I think we need sufficient information. And for me, the next big piece of sufficient information is the vote of the Historical Society.
So, this has been, I think this has been the hardest, at least for me personally, the hardest place to even come down. I don't think I've come to a landing place yet because there are really, there's nobody who's right and there's nobody that's wrong. There's no, you know, it's a value. I agree. It's a position of values. But I would take some difference in that right now, that building has no use to the public, right now. It's not being used. It's in terrible shape on the inside, and I think the outside is soon to follow. So right now, it's of no use to the public. It's going to change, right? The Historical Society can't keep it up. It's not gonna be a museum. So something's going to change in the future on that. Now, is that gonna be, Mr. Evans, is that gonna, to his point, it could be tore down, it could be reused. But something's gonna change, right? It's not just gonna stay the way it is. So the question is, what is the, what do we do about that? And what can we, as a board, do to support a positive change or the most positive change? I do think, Lori, to your point, that we, there has been a lot of discussion, the working group and even going back into the spring of last year there. And as you've heard from members of the board, they've been talking about this for 20 years. At least some members, and some people are more active than others. So I think there's been a lot of discussion about how to use it. There's been, we've talked about CPA, we've talked about businesses, but nothing's really materialized. So the question is, is the proposal before us, really is it a good idea? And will it improve what we have now? And to me, at this point, I think it does. I think it reuses the building. I think that the building is iconic. I remember, so I started working in the Lawrence Court in 2006. And part of that jurisdiction is North Andale. And I remember driving around, I forget why, and seeing that building and being awestruck by that building and the Common. And it was one of the things that drew me back to town. But not the inside. I'd never been in the inside. I knew it was a textile museum, but I never went in the inside. It was the appearance and the feel of that building and the Common. And I think that's what's important, is keeping that feel. So if we tore it down, I think the feel changes. Maybe it's better. Maybe you plant trees. Maybe, I don't know, but maybe it's worse. I don't see a, at least at this point, I don't see a traffic impact. I don't see a real impact other than... I agree with Mr. Becker. The use inside may change, but I really don't see an impact of changing this to eight townhouses or five townhouses or however many, you know, up to that scale. So I think it's our job to make the best decision on the proposal that we have in front of us and try to draft a warrant article. And maybe that article doesn't get the support of the board. I don't know. But I think it's our duty to at least try. I agree that we need a vote and the support of the Historical Society. So you guys have work to do. We're gonna need more information about what this proposal will mean on impacts, on town resources, on traffic. I don't see that it's gonna be a lot, but we need all of that information. But I think it's our job to make a proposal and present it to the town. I don't think this, I don't think this should be a citizen petition. I think it should be something that comes from us, even if we wind up being divided. So I think that's at least where I sit on it. So we'll continue discussing it. And I think, so, I mean, Tom, why don't you come forward? Do you want to just come up for a second? So I'm not looking for comment. I just want to be...
Just looking for targets, not comment.
Trying to tell you where we're at, okay? So you've heard from all of us that there's some support for this, some not support, and some I don't know. To the extent that I think I'm gonna work with whoever's interested in trying to draft a warrant article. Obviously, we need your input as the applicant. Whether that ultimately becomes something that you're supportive of, you know, you have to decide. And whether you want to do your own petition, you have to decide that. But we're gonna at least work to move this forward where there could potentially be a warrant article from the planning board. Okay? I just wanted to kind of explain where we're at.
No, and I appreciate that. And I think, you know, just, again, I know how difficult this is for everybody, but I really appreciate the thoughtful discussion on all sides from everybody. I mean, I know there's people who don't agree, but it's, I think the right solution and the right conclusion will be arrived at through the process. I really do. So.
So we'll keep moving forward. Historical Society, you've got some work to do. So anyone who wants to continue, we're going to have... When's our next meeting? Should we put it on or not? I'm kind of thinking maybe we should skip one, but I don't know. Let's put it on and we'll put it on the agenda. We'll try to be clear on the agenda, what we're going to talk about. The idea, again, is we're moving forward. So if there's any information to report from yourself, from the Historical Society, about what's happened, if anything, in the interim?
Perhaps another proposal.
That, so just to be clear, that's always on the table. I know last meeting, someone had mentioned another proposal.
Yeah, absolutely.
If someone else has something, please bring it forward. But I don't think we're gonna stop the train, you know, until something happens. But so, I guess we'll keep it on and to the extent that we can start talking... Yeah, new information and discussion of if we were to sponsor, how would we look? What would be, what type of zoning might be a... What would be, what type of zoning might be appropriate? What type of limitations would be appropriate, such as historical covenants, restrictive uses, things like that, you know? If we're talking about preserving the building, there's going to be a historical covenant that says you can't shake something out of the building. If we're talking about uses, we're going to restrict certain, if we went to a business-type district, there's certain uses that are just going to be carved out, you can't do. So those types of things will be what we discuss. There'll be no votes taken at the next meeting, so everybody knows, if you want to come, please come, but we're not voting on anything.
And at least if we keep it on the agenda, if, if, if there isn't anything, you know, significant, we can always push it out. But it's harder to pull it in if we haven't scheduled it. I mean, we'll communicate in the, in the meantime, and if there's, if there's something material, then, then keep it on.
Great, great.
Okay. Thank you all.
All right. Take a one-minute recess, for anyone who doesn't want to stick around for our other remaining articles. What's that? No. Uh, we went through, we did the bond release.
You saved that for you.
We did the bond release. We haven't done the new. Yeah. I left my, I left my tea in the car. I wonder if it's still hot. It's closed. All right, you have three minutes. All right, four.
No, you have, you're having a discussion about an item, it has to be-
All right, anyone who's not staying, please leave. Anyone who's staying, please stay. All right, there's room. All right. Eighteen seventy-four Turnpike Street, potential for a zoning map amendment. Article for zoning district change from village residential to general business for land located at eighteen seventy-four Turnpike Street. I feel like we're doing a lot of Turnpike Street today. Go for it, quickly.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. My name is Robert La Boy. I'm an attorney with offices in Andover, Massachusetts. I'm here tonight with my clients, Jane and Richard O'Donnell and their daughter Megan. Some of you may know, Jane runs a dance studio called Center for Performing Arts. It's located at Stonewall Plaza, at eighteen twenty Turnpike Street. So when this property became available, and it still has a very large "for sale" sign on it, Mr. Hagerty passed away, so the family decided to put it on the market. We've negotiated and have it under contract with the ability to do some due diligence, so we thought we would come see you about your, getting your support for a rezoning article. If you look at the assessor's map, you can see that this parcel is, I call it the parcel that time forgot. Everything around it is pretty much built out. The, you can see to the south is where the condominium property is, is zoned B4. And to the north of that is Stonewall Plaza, which is zoned general business. So, in order to make, not perhaps unify the zoning in this, you know, neighborhood, but at least alter what's really just a historical accident, that, you know, there wasn't any urge prior to this, before Mr. Hagerty's death, to, let's say, bring it into the 21st century. So what my clients would like to do, if this were rezoned, is that they would propose a modest office building, ten to twelve thousand square feet. Primarily house the dance studio, which is in about nine thousand square feet next door at the Stonewall Plaza. Mr. O'Donnell has a office here in North Andover. He's had businesses for thirty, thirty, thirty-five years, as long as I've known him, and he would move his office here. The O'Donnells moved to North Andover in nineteen eighty-one, so they've been here thirty-seven years. Obviously, love the community. They'd love to be at this location. If the zoning could be updated to general business, I think it would be a great fit for the town and for my clients.
What's, what's the concept with parking?
Well, we would conform with the parking requirements.
But where are we, I mean, do you have an idea of what you're talking about, in front and back?
Well, most likely in front. I mean, there's a, unless there's a change, there'll be a hundred-foot setback from, from one fourteen.
Yeah, the, what's the lot size again?
It's one acre, one point zero eight.
Okay, this is one acre. Yeah, now I know, now I'm going to remind you exactly where that is.
I mean, if you, I, I'm sort of old tech tonight, because it's a drawing. But, and I, I have copies, and I'll leave them to Gina, I can pass them on now. But basically, that's how the acre lays out, and Stonewall's here. Setback line's been hashed in here, so this, this area, which is, you know, more than a hundred feet deep, it's probably, you know, a hundred fifty feet across.
Did you pick GP, why?
General business?
Yeah.
Mostly because it's adjacent to Stonewall. I mean, we, we certainly don't have plans to turn it into a retail plaza. Again, that would be-
I mean, are you okay with, if you go through a process here, of coveting it out, certain uses?
No, I, I, no problem whatsoever. In fact, Gina and I talked about that. And I, I brought up, you know, that there was this ability for a landowner to do a conditional covenant with the town for a proposed rezoning, and in fact, tonight, I, before I came over, I, you know, I went through your zoning code, and I sort of redlined things that, you know, have, have no real use as on one fourteen now, in this area as it's developed. Would be happy to covenant out these and whatever other,
Yeah.
Not offensive uses, but inappropriate uses.
Because at one level, when you go GP, you're hitting the lowest common denominator. And so, I tend to be a little bit skeptical, but if you're going to covenant out some of the uses and make it consistent with other uses, then, you know, I think we have something that, that protects that a little bit more, so.
You might.
Have you at all thought about, and again, I don't get ahead here, of integrating the curb cut with a, a public property?
I'm not sure that they would be interested, but it's not impossible, but.
I mean, from a planning point of view, you well know that, you know, the fewer curb cuts we get, the more integration, the better offer going to pay, so.
So, I'm sorry, I may have missed it. So is the idea that what would go on this parcel would be, CPA would move from where it is now to this other part? I'm just asking, because my daughter goes there. No, I'm just curious about what, what the use would be. Because it's really consistent with what's already there. I mean, it is what's already there.
What would you do, any ideas, the current building?
It would, you know, be demolished, so.
No, no, I'm sorry. Where, where, so if you're moving a business, the, the dance studio from one to another place, the, the current dance studio, would it be two dance studios, or would that be something-
No, no, Jane O'Donnell would move the business from-
It's only like one, and it's just one floor.
Adjacent, right, yeah.
It's not the whole thing.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering what would happen next door. I was curious what that would be too.
But some of the existing uses would still, I presume, right?
Right.
So conversely, the next parcel in red there, although that's a 4B, it's business four zone, which is a lot less intensive than general business. The uses there would allow business, professional office, and other offices, so one of the uses is a covered four. But as far as the dance studio, it does allow for swimming, and our tennis club shall be permitted with a special permit. You could modify that language to include the dance studio, karate studio, that type of use.
Well, yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, that's, we could covenant it out, or you could make a modification of the other. Yeah, I mean, something like that, but, I mean, I think that, you know, one of those things is just sort of parenthetically, I think that Stonewall Plaza turned out pretty well, in terms of, just in general, some of our commercial development. The, the place on the other side, not so much. I think that was one of our misses, as a planning board.
That's the opera shop, that's the sub shop.
Yeah, that one did not, I, I, I don't know, maybe we weren't, who else? Was I the only one that was on the board when that one got done?
Um, yeah, I was there.
Success has been apparent, while failure is an orphan.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah.
But as I said, I, I did invite you to pass these.
Gina, why don't we see what we could come up with, or just kind of look at, in the B4 with some language changes, or the alternative of some covenants, I think whatever-
And covenants are thirty years typically, and it's just-
If we could change the-
Sometimes they get lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, I think that might be better.
If we could do the B4, I think that would be a cleaner way to go.
A good transition from general business to where people are.
Dimensionally, it presents a problem, because there's a minimum eighty thousand square foot lot size, which-
If we could also, okay.
Do any of the Bs have smaller lot sizes?
Yep, the B1 is twenty-five, I'm sorry, it's-
B1's twenty-five, B2's twenty-five, B3 is one-twenty, B8, and general business is twenty-five.
So, well, let's just look at all the uses and all the, the business ones and see if, if that approach works.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and obviously, you know, the dimensional requirements are a little easier under general business. And again, if the, the concern is, you know, closing, you know, keeping the barn door closed, I think the covenant approach is probably, would be more facilitative for what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we got it, but maybe even some combination, we could do B2, whatever, if we could do a smaller one with less restrictions, then have less, that we have to covenant out.
Sure.
Makes it easier for us, you know, so. Okay, so I think, sounds like we're pretty supportive of it. We just have some work to do.
Okay.
We'll keep it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Could you put it ahead of Bay of Historical Society?
Are you having fun watching that?
Mine's not happening. Does Jen have a discount? We'll, we'll, we'll move it up. We'll move it up.
They actually just hung me out on a recital.
We'll do that as a continued public hearing, and we'll try to see if we can do that earlier in the evening. Back at, yeah, back at our normal location.
Good, and I'll leave these with Jane.
Right.
I'll, I'll send it electronically to her, so you can give her.
Okay. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Article five, earth material to removal?
Okay, this has actually been drafted by ourselves.
Forget it.
It's somewhat housekeeping, if we certainly can carry it to the meeting if you prefer. But, earth removal, earth material removal by law is actually section five of the bylaw, so it's been in existence for a very long time. John Smolak is still in the audience, so I have had some conversations with John, we got an S. Ironically, he paused me with a question related to bylaw. One day after the Fields project that's coming before you for the recreational complex, consultants on that also asked a question related to this. And so when you read the detail of this, it appears to be for a use for earth removal, and I can only associate it back with Billy Ray, who had the property in the corner of Ray and Chesnut Street, who actually had a clay pit, and he excavated clay and sold it. That use has not been there for some time, houses have been constructed-
Yeah, Peach Street, yeah.
-in its place. So, I first thought it was just a use, but then as it goes on, it talks about incidental to permitted development. And it would almost apply to every single permit you'd ever issued, and we've never brought earth removal before in conjunction with a site plan review, because it's actually a permit issued by the zoning board of appeals. And so all I've done here is simply add the language in the land disturbance permit exemption, so that the land disturbance now really has taken this place. Because if a development is to occur on, that will disturb at least an acre of land, it triggers land disturbance. And so those Form A properties Tom referred to earlier, we actually had one back in two thousand and twelve, there was five lots on Stephen Street, they triggered these land disturbances. And before, we had no way to trigger it, other than, I guess, this bylaw that no one was executing to. And so I advocate to keep it in place, because it does provide, if it's less than an acre, and recently, we had one on Salem Street that did everything they possibly could do to keep it one square inch less than an acre, so they didn't have to go to that permit. So technically, I think the building commissioner does have some review here, where he could trigger the same design guidelines that we trigger through the land disturbance. And this just stops them from having to go before two boards on one level. And it's the exact same language, right on the land disturbance cut in this, into it.
You're going to have to explain it, tell me then? All right, so-
Do it at the end.
Site plan review has come since this bylaw, and land disturbance has come since, and they both account for, I think, what the intent here is in terms of earth removal.
So do we need a, we need, but we do need a public hearing for it, right?
Yes, so we go on, if you, if you want to support it, it's just simply presented, so that we can clean up, I think, one bylaw and-
Okay.
Yeah, the other one at the same time, the zoning.
How about it?
Okay.
All right, new public hearings. Thank you for your patience. Three fifty Great Pond Road, Christopher Burton, Alan Goodwin. Application for watershed special permit under sections one ninety-five, four point one seven, one ninety-five, twenty point seven. The applicant proposes replanting of landscaping and then non-discharge and non-disturbance, so R1 zoning to disrupt. Hi.
Christopher Burton, three fifty Great Pond Road.
I have my landscape architect with him, with me.
Hi, James E. Manuel, landscape architect, Myrtle, Mass.
All right, let's start plants.
Okay. So we are looking to plant mostly native quantity of, I believe it's about thirty-five trees in the plant list. Maybe thirty-eight trees. In the areas that are shown on the plan, above you there, those dark symbols indicating where the tree locations are going to be, if you scroll down and see the plant list. You probably can't read it, I don't know if the resolution made it there. But the trees anyways that will be, that will be installed are mostly deciduous. There's some evergreens, there are a few hemlocks, that's the native evergreen that we're going to be using. A combination of mostly smaller-scale trees because of the risk of trees falling and damage on the structure, the new structure that's being built, so that was one of the- So that was one of the things that we looked at, were trees that had environmental value, ornamental value, and didn't get so big as to create fall hazard, like many of the trees that were on the site before, which were either dead or had lost numerous branches, or were about to. So with, we've got things like red bud, dogwood, birch, different types of dogwood, shadlo, witch hazel, sarsgrass. There are a few ornamental plants that aren't natives for the trees, but those would be things like a flowering cherry here and there. And I think that was, you know, Japanese, one Japanese native, so they were just a few accent trees, just to kind of add some visual interest in the, in the tree replacement. But the rest of them are what we would call kind of mid-story or under-story native trees. We also have a number of shrubs, about thirty something shrubs, maybe, actually, I suppose fifty shrubs, that are gonna be dispersed throughout the tree planting, so we're gonna, in the areas that are defined by the bed line of the plantings, it will be a combination of trees and then under-story shrubs. Again, that's about eighty percent native, so we've got bayberry, sweet pepper, native sumac, mountain laurel, viburnum. And then we've got some boxwood, which isn't technically native, but it's a little bit of an ornamental plant that helps edge and contain erosion as well, too. And lastly, we have plantings that are gonna be around the foundation of the house, now those are the, that's one area where we're just sort of using plants that kind of stay a little bit tighter, or more controlled than some of the native species, and things like azaleas and stuff, and small rhododendrons that would go around the house. So those are what we'll call the foundation plantings, those are on the side of the house, not facing pond, but facing the other side. On the side that does face the pond, there's really no work that's being proposed outside of what the previous part of the law, except for resetting what was an existing brick patio back in its location, and a walkway connecting it to the driveway. We did wanna look at getting permission to remove a large tree, I think it's a, it was an oak, a type of oak, that's overhanging to garage. So if you look at the garage, and you see it says remove existing tree, that tree is kind of looming over the garage, and again, it was thought to be a potential hazardous condition because of the way that the branches and everything are hanging over the tree, over the structure. The garage is part of the site plan, we were looking to, this isn't necessarily part of the planting, so that's really the planting, I guess if there's any questions on that, we could take those, but if we wanna continue with just.
Well, where are you planting, what's there now, are you taking, what are you taking out?
So, maybe Chris can talk to, about that.
Well, what's gonna take out is most of the trees that are dead, in storm damage, and just hazardous. Because if you go to this property, even before this picture, when I bought this property in December twenty eighth last year, the month of January, it seemed like whenever a storm came, a tree came down. Fortunately, I have a picture of this, but it's in my phone. Two trees that are facing Great Pond Road are actually just over this hill, I mean, these, I don't know what type of trees, because I'm not familiar with names like him, but they were big, they both fell forward, and I was just like, God, this is great, I just bought the property, and two trees just fell, and they were enormous. So I had those removed, and from there, it just, it just became, from looking at the yard, it was very hazardous, and I have a nine-year-old daughter, and I was not gonna have her in this yard with the way these trees were looking. This property probably has been neglected for fifteen years, and you probably know, you drive down Great Pond Road, but nobody did anything to these trees for maybe twenty years, you know, even the house, that's why the house was rotted on the outside, when we demoed the outside, and that was one of the reasons why, I mean, I had her there with me explaining that, you know, just these trees were just dead, ready to fall the next storm, and every winter, last winter was pretty bad, and I was not gonna go through a winter this year with another problem, because there were, there were dead trees everywhere.
I guess I could use, is, we're doing this, we're having this because you did a lot of tree cutting, right?
Correct.
Okay, and you think you have permission to do it?
Well.
Yeah, right.
No, I, I, I beg to differ.
Did you, when did you get permission?
I had, well, I had this woman and another girl there.
So let, let's start over, I, I guess I went to you guys first, Monica. Why don't you tell us what we have, why don't we, we skip the, the normal introduction part?
I mean, I think trying to say, you said, I said, is not a way to guide it.
Well, we'll try and get to the baseline of what we're even here.
So let's start.
Dead trees.
So let's start with Monica, what is the basis for this special permit request, and what's being requested of us?
This is an after the fact filing that dates back to a November request to remove several dangerous trees. On November seventh, myself and the former conservation inspector visited the site out of, after receiving an email from Mr. Burt, stating that there were several trees in danger of falling. Upon receiving that email, we went out, we made, we walked the site, found several trees that could have been in, in danger. However, we identified maybe about seven trees that were kind of, we would say, iffy, most of the trees were healthy. We did indicate that if, if Mr. Burt was going to follow through with the plan that was submitted, that he would have to do a filing.
Filing with whom?
With, with planning due to a watershed special permit. Under section one ninety, ninety five dash four, point nineteen C, properties within the town of North Andover, of the town of North Andover Watershed Protection District are required to file for a special permit for vegetation removal or cutting other than in connection with agricultural use or maintenance of a landscaped area. So again, on our, during our November seventh site visit, we identified several trees that were to be removed and specified, that anything other than that would be, would require a filing. On the thirteenth, I visited the site after hearing that more than several had been cut, and you see the pictures from, from my site visit. I then alerted Mr. Burt that he would have to do an after a fact, after the fact filing with the, with the planning board, due to the nature of the tree cutting.
So we're being asked for permission, for a special permit, watershed special permit for work that's already been done?
Yes.
And then replantings that haven't been done? And, and then I heard some mention of a, of a building, or a shed, or?
Well, I think that on the plans.
Garage.
A garage.
So a little background on this.
We're being asked to do anything on a garage.
So this location was actually permitted to be completely remodeled some years ago, the permit was never adapted, it was actually during the permit extension act, and which got re-extended. And so the permit only expired maybe two years ago, although it was permitted probably in two thousand and eleven, twelve, maybe. And so the plans are actually used, and they're superimposing their landscape plan on those engineered plans that were done at the time. The remodeling that the homeowner is doing is really now just staying exactly within the same footprint, he's not following the remodeling plan other than this proposed garage and patio. So the existing garage at the, originally was going to be demolished, it was gonna be attached to the house at that point. This one, again, the plan says that he wants to rebuild it on that same footprint.
So is that part of the special permit request?
Because he's not, he's not changing that footprint at all.
But is there an active permit for that?
No. Nope, he's just reconstructing his garage on the same footprint, not adding any gross floor area, not expanding it.
We don't have a role in.
Right. Not, he's not any, any additional impervious surface for that garage.
So I make sure we're clear, we are.
So this may look familiar to some here, I don't think you were on the board at the time of that, but you would have been at the board.
Yeah.
It actually went to the ZBA to demolish the house, it was in really bad disrepair, the ZBA didn't approve the demolition, they, they thought what was being proposed was too large a footprint, and so rather than do that, they came back to the planning with an alternative to actually rehab and bump out the house in a lot of directions, that bump out piece is not happening anymore, he's just staying within the same footprint of the original structure.
And do we have any input from anyone in conservation, or you guys about these types of trees and the location, or anything for us to make decisions on?
Yes, in your packet, you would see a letter from conservation, actually an email from conservation, saying that they don't have jurisdiction over this. They were concerned about the number of trees that would be cut down as it can contribute to erosion. They did make a comment on the fact that there were both native and non-native plants.
I didn't see the letter, I see the drawings.
So did they request they all be native?
They didn't go that far, since it's not in their jurisdiction, but she did make a note that there were both native and non-native plants.
Yeah, I didn't see that in the packet. Do you have property of the lake?
Uh, yes, I'll bring that up.
So the hundred foot to the lake is all on this side of the house, and those, that's not where the trees were cut, the trees are actually cut on the front side facing Great Pond Road, but they're within the non-disturbance.
But I see on one of these two plans that it also includes pruning of trees in the area between the house and the lake, well inside the two hundred and fifty foot disturbance zone, close to the hundred, not over it, but on the lake side of the house, it's noting vista pruning, has that occurred?
No, in fact, in order to have the vista pruning take place, they have to fly over conservation to do that, they have not done that.
Right, and also with us?
Yes.
And that's a steep slope going down to the lake from there? And what about, can you just help, in terms of the, the permit here, can you just refresh, you know, we're dealing, we're not dealing with the hundred foot zone, because nothing's happening there, right? But we are dealing with both the two hundred and fifty foot no disturbance zone, as well as the three hundred and twenty-five non-discharge zone, so can you just talk a little bit about how this applies to, let's just say, the no disturbance zone, the two hundred and fifty foot?
Uh, yeah, can you do that?
Yes, and the plot she ran in that bylaw is in the non-disturbance zone.
Okay.
As requiring a special permit, so there's give you a little within the non-disturbance, it's not specified as to have to be non-dis disturbed.
Right.
So, so the property actually, I think the four hundred foot mark is almost all the way out to Great Pond Road.
Right.
So, so this mound is really, really close to the house, it's mounded up, you can't see the house from the ground though, because of that mound and all the trees that were on it.
But the no disturbance zone is on the lake side of the mound, right, in other words, that's part of the downslope, by the time you get to the no disturbance?
No, the non-disturbance, you can see at front, it's the bottom of this, with what is basically a large mound or, or hill. So over here, where it says mulch, I'll bring it in there, so that's where the non-disturbance comes into play. Most of the work is within the three hundred and twenty-five, non-discharge zone.
But what's the remedy for the no disturbance zone piece, I guess that's what I'm trying to get to.
For disturbing it?
Yeah.
For having done it?
Right.
If we issue a permit now, I think that nullifies any.
I guess it's a little bit, you know, what I was trying to do is do some notional math, that how many trees were removed?
Right.
And then how many trees are gonna replace them?
Right, and for me, John, that calculation is most important within the non-disturbance zone portion, and quite frankly, that's a small percentage of the area that was clear cut.
Yeah.
Most of the clear cutting is in the non-discharge zone.
Is that true?
I'm just looking at the map.
Well, this, does it show the trees that were cut?
No. But it's essentially that, that area between the bubbles there, right?
Those trees that were cut, they did leave the, the stumps on, on the site, most tree cutting seems to take place on the front of the house, however, there is ample tree cutting on the side as well. A greater number were removed actually from the house within the three hundred and twenty-five non-disturbance.
So what was cut from the, within the no disturbance zone, do we, do we know how many? I think that's Peter's point, how many?
Yes. I have several.
Because it's not obvious, this, this looks like a drawing for, for new installation.
So John, I'm just, I think echoing your point, but for me, your point about what's the replacement ratio from what was cut, at least for me, is most important inside the no disturbance.
Right, yeah, and I'm just trying to, I, I, I can't tell on the map exactly whether the disturbance.
Hold on, yeah.
On the slope one?
I'll go back to the slope.
This one where we should go out there?
There we go.
So that, that mound is facing your house?
Yes.
And so I would say that curved line captures those lower trees.
So to, to our back, behind, behind us is the road?
Yeah.
No, that's the structure.
Is the house, okay.
Okay, so that mound is facing the house, and the, the non-disturbance zone, that curved line on that plan, I would say that those.
So in other words, the stumps we're seeing are within the non-disturbance zone?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
And then there were some around the house, but I believe the majority of the ones closest to the house, you were, had given approval with someone?
We approved the removal of three trees on the side of the house, and then we approved the training of one limb. Actually, that approval was also given by the conservation field agent, it was a large limb that, it's actually still there, but it, it's overhanging the, the garage.
And so the other pictures, you have shoulders, three trees, they're closest to the house.
Yes.
The approval had been given.
Yes, and they were, and they were marked with the, with ties.
So I'm interested in the replacement across both, you know, both non-discharge and no disturbance, but my, my larger concern is what's the replacement to make the cure remedy within the no disturbance? And, you know, I, I see the plantings, but, I mean, is that where we're emphasizing native or not, are they comparable size, without being dangerous? Are they small shrubs there versus, and I don't, I don't really know the answer to that, within the no disturbance?
The trees that are proposed are, they're not at the same height as the other ones, they're, they're ones would, would have a nice, I guess, growth to them, however, they, they don't rise up as high as these old ones, these old ones were old oak trees.
Right. Do we have a landscape, he can answer.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to hear.
And I would say landscape beds are not typically under your purpose, the landscape beds around the house, but they'd be deemed those to require to be native, you sort of like conditions, something like that, so.
The trees that are within the two hundred and fifty foot non-disturbance, we have seven or eight trees proposed. Note that these trees would have to be field located when we go out to plant them, because we would.
Can't put them where a rock is.
You would not put them where a rock is. So, so, it, it's a little bit schematic when you see a tree just over the non-disturbance line, and that could be within it, so that's why I say seven or eight trees are shown in that area. Those are all native trees, those are dogwoods, native dogwoods, and eastern red bud, which are all native trees, they're just not what we would call shade trees, meaning like an oak, or maple, or large scale tree, and that was with the request to, of the concern of safety. These trees will get about twenty to thirty feet tall, and not be crashing down on the house. Those are on the, on the hillside that is within that, within that zone, within the two hundred and fifty foot zone. In addition to that, there are a few shrubs, maybe ten shrubs that are needed as well, too.
Also within the non-disturbance?
So we have, I would say a total of eight trees and ten, ten shrubs in that zone, if you're looking for a ratio, and I'm not sure exactly how many stumps. I know there were some, I believe there were some Norway maples, actually quite a few Norway maples out there, which are invasive tree.
So, I mean, just to, I mean, I, I don't know if you've driven by, but it's not a few damaged trees, it was, it was, they were all cut.
Right.
Which, I'm, I'm just saying.
I know, I understand.
That's, when you drive by, that's your reaction.
Correct.
All the trees were cut, so it's an after the fact, and, and again, like.
I mean, if that's the case, I sort of wanted to get that sense, is seven trees don't seem like a suit of application, it's not even a one to one, but.
Well, we have seven trees within the two fifty, we have thirty five total on the site.
I mean, that's probably comparable, I guess.
Trees along the roadway, along the, the big business. Trees along the roadway, along the, the big business zone, those are all outside of one hundred.
Right, right.
Those are definitely...
So I guess there's, there's two issues, John. One is just the sort of comparable numbers overall. And, you know, I, if it's thirty-five, I mean, I don't know how many trees were there, but, I mean, do you think that's comparable number?
To be honest, I didn't count the number of trees when I first went out, since we were just approving the removal of just a few trees. But the stumps are removing, I can certainly go out and...
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking for that, but it strikes me, it, it strikes me just sort of generally that thirty-five would probably be ballpark. But, but again, I'm, I'm glad to hear about the number of trees and shrubs within the no disturbance. I think that's the biggest concern. And, and then the other thing is about the vista pruning. I, I, I don't understand what, where we are with that.
That was not included in, in this replanting plan. That was in the original plan. So if they want to do that, they have to file with us for that as well as conservation.
Wouldn't the no disturb zone still not allow vista pruning?
It does not allow it, and so I would recommend we condition that in this special permit.
Right.
That, that is not specified as part of this filing. That was on an older plan, so we're closer.
Right.
It also shows a repave in the driveway.
Old plan.
This, oh, okay.
So we're just, so...
So we're just talking about...
That's down the line. Somebody would you want to take a, kind of stab at a draft decision for us to kind of incorporate these thoughts and makes clear what is and is not part of the decision that the old stuff, we're not approving any of that?
Yes.
Not approving the vista pruning, that approving the like amount of trees as there were being...
Like amount, yeah, and native trees within the non-disturbed, right? I think that's what we talked about, native trees and shrubs?
Native trees and shrubs within the, within the non-disturbed, non-disturbed zone, right. If you'd like to condition the foundation plantings, however, the ones up against the house are not all native. So we could certainly modify that for that to be native. Again, sometimes it's not typical.
Again, I would, I would recommend consulting conservation and ensure they're satisfied.
Right.
If they are not native, that they are satisfied with that type of...
So why don't we condition it that way? Yeah.
There was one other idea.
They also want to remove a big tree behind the garage.
Yeah, and there, I have to say, I was a little stunned to hear that the landscape architect wasn't sure what kind of tree it was, maybe an oak. I mean, you're asking us to remove a large tree and you don't know what kind of tree it is?
Well, the leaves had come down at that point and wasn't, wasn't sure enough, so.
Is it something that can be limbed as opposed to removed or is...
Possibly.
If I'm not mistaken, when, when we did our site visit, that was the one we, we, both my, myself and conservation agreed should be limbed rather than removed.
Right.
Is that something you can look at?
Yeah, oh, no, I mean, I can tell you, it's a tall tree and there's one that comes out this way, but it's tall.
Yeah.
It's, it's coming down one day in a storm and we'll, we'll see.
Okay, so, I'll try, try a draft and we'll pick it up in the next meeting to see if we can go on with that.
Excellent.
Great, great.
Did you want to ask for the patio?
Can I just ask one more question on this? Was your, was your outfit, the outfit that removed the trees?
No, it was not.
Okay, because, and the reason I ask that is because the watershed protection zones are very important. It's, you know, I mean, certainly you have your property, you purchased it, that's great, but that's community resource, public health, drinking water, and very critical, so when we see companies that are doing that within that zone without taking the right steps, that's a concern.
Right, no, I understand now.
Yeah, so we appreciate everything you're doing to remedy that. That's great.
Thank you.
Before we finish this, the plan does also indicate a permeable paver patio area that's not there now, between the house and the knoll and that, that hill. And that was something that we were looking at. I think it's about a fourteen by twenty sized permeable, so we would, so it would be porous. And that was to be used as an outdoor space for a grill or something like that, not the water side of the house, but on the other side of the house.
Is that part of this request?
So I guess it's up to the person who wants to make that part of this request. We have it on the plan and, and...
How, how big, did you say how big? I'm sorry if I...
It's about fourteen by twenty.
Yeah, it's probably going to be brick or something that's really nothing going to, the ground is not going to be disturbed.
If that's going to be part of the request, I think on the agenda, at least, it says the effort of replanting of landscaping and non-disturbed and non-disturbance zones, but it doesn't say anything.
No, it was my understanding it was purely the plantings and not any of the other features.
So, I think you guys need to figure out if that's something, if you want that to be part of that, and if so, communicate with Monica because I want that clear on the agenda of what we're going to be talking about and voting on. Talk amongst yourselves, talk with her in the next day or two.
And I, I think it's something we could consider, but not in an ad hoc way.
Right.
Right? Is that right?
Or can we settle on material you would use and the dimensions and have that in writing?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it, but it's not really listed on here.
Or if we don't decide, then next year I get a permit.
Right, right, exactly. You can come back, it's up to you.
Non-disturbed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate what you're doing to restore.
Thank you for your patience, Scott.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, Four High Street, RCG West Mill. Thank you to everyone who's still around for this one. Sorry it took so long to get to you.
I think we gave you a good example.
Earlier in the meeting, we did talk about what...
Oh, we're having to, I was trapped down in the hall.
Oh, all right.
Good evening, David Steinberg from RCG LLC, representing RCG West Mill and A LLC tonight. John Smalli from Smalli and Vaughn.
So why don't we start, why don't we start with Monica, why don't we start with David?
Before you, as an applications for a Sub District A definitive master plan, special permit for phase one in accordance with requirements in section one ninety-five dash six point one, one ninety-five dash eight point one through one ninety-five eight point eight. We'll just skip the one ninety-five, ten point seven, eighteen point nine through eighteen, through twenty. It's for, it's to allow for the allocation of eight hundred and thirty-seven existing parking spaces for the West Mill on the property located at Four High Street. So for on-street parking within a hundred yards, on-street parking spaces leased or owned within four hundred yards and shared parking spaces. This property is located between the ISGBR four underlying zoning districts as well as the downtown overlay zoning district, part two, Sub District A historic mill area. So they're looking to talk to you more about this, this, which deals with their parking.
Here, I'll start. I just wanted to say the, obviously we were before you recently on the overall master plan and we're working sequentially through that. And this is phase one with the redevelopment of the existing mills, including taking down the large former sort of manufacturing building and adding parking there.
So, and you were before us last time on the waiver of the preliminary master plan, correct?
So we get, correct.
So now you're working on the official master plan for the, definitive master plan special permit and coming to us with a piece of that. Is that right?
Well, for the phase, right, for, so the definitive master plan is phased in this plan. So phase one, which was the redevelopment of the existing buildings, removal of the prior building, addition of parking. And actually, there were other previously non-conforming uses that come into conformance as we get into Sub District A. And partly we worked on that zoning with this board at that time. So this, I, I believe this special permit consolidates a number of things that formalizes that. So some, some ways use having to do with the residential permits we got under the downtown overlay previously. There's, there's an accessory use to one of our tents. That's warehousing in the buildings that was allowable and needs a special permit that's consolidated under this. And then, you know, I think the, the parking requirements is, is more something where we're asking for something special at this step. To say we, we now know what the uses are and how they balance out across the site. Most of the parking, we're asking for tonight, has to do with sites that are adjacent and owned by affiliates of this property that have been used historically by this property, including the one across Church Street, across Church Street, and the shared parking garage that East Mill and West Mill both use.
Yeah, and just so, just to add to what David had indicated, back over the past several years, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, there are three separate decisions under the old Sub District A zoning. And as David indicated, we had worked with the board to come up with the, the new downtown overlay district, Sub District A zoning. And so what we're doing here is simply taking all the prior approvals, now the improvements that were approved under those old decisions and under the old zoning, and bringing them into the new Sub District A, which was the intent all along. But the only exception being is that we're, we're looking at making some adjustments to the parking, but we're not creating new parking spaces. So basically, it's, it's a sort of a recodification under the new zoning via special permit that we're looking for this evening.
So what, what is the reallocation of the parking?
So, there was a table included, I think, with the complete filing there. But essentially, the different uses, and there are several across this property that have different parking requirements. And we have proceeded with the, in each step of supplying, providing enough parking that satisfied each one of those uses as we started to fill out the buildings. So now those are complete and we're looking at the usage of the parking. Part of the original intent was to surplus ballfield parking that was remote to the site and less valuable. Add apartment at center of the site to try to be able to accomplish the new uses, the retail, the restaurants, the apartments. And now that we've done that and we've figured out what each part of the building's parking requirement is and how it conforms to the existing zoning, we wanted to get a special permit from this board that would memorialize that parking count and give us some relief on, in particular, the residential parking requirement where those spaces are used primarily at night and the rest of the uses are used primarily during the day. So that was sixty-four out of the eight hundred and thirty-seven parking spaces we're talking about here. And it was permitted, what has historically happened, that some of the parking takes place off-site technically in the Church Street lot and on the East Mill, in the East Mill garage. And then this, this plan that you see on the board now shows essentially in the blue zone where all these parking spaces exist and will continue to exist. And the yellow zone is essentially what the phase two will address as we come back to you with that. But before we proceed with that, we need to have a good understanding that everything within our blue zone is compliant with, being able to carve that out. It should also be noted, we came, we brought before the board the question of the railroad parcel as it was on the West Mill side and owned by East Mill. We've, we've signed over that agreement.
So can you correlate this drawing with the numbers on the table?
Everything on the table is in the blue zone.
And why?
And so the lots, G and H, which I think were referred to on that table, are in the yellow zone.
Is the parking based on occupancy or is there like a formula that calculates spaces used based on like numbers of people?
It's so, from the, from the zoning standpoint, it's going to be square footage width. So the apartments have a certain ratio per bedroom and the rest of the uses have per square foot. You know, we find some of those uses in the zone and they, they, we probably would say the zoning is a little, requires a little more parking than you really need for those businesses in general for each one of those uses. You see even, you know, we're talking about asking for even sixty-four spaces. There, there are hundreds of spaces.
If in larger context, based on your existing uses, what percentage of the parking is typically...
Well, I'd say if you look at this drawing, there are very few people from the West Mill side currently now parking in the East Mill garage. They have an agreement, actually currently for over four hundred spaces in that garage. That's the biggest piece of what has happened is everybody parking at the center of the site and competing for certain spaces there.
Yeah, I mean, I get it that certain ideal spots, there's always a shortage, but in aggregate, you, you've got to have a lot of free parking.
Oh, it would be hundreds on any day. So most of, most of that yellow zone, essentially from the bottleneck beyond, out toward the ballfields, has been used by us for construction staging, by Columbia Gas, for certain temporary uses. So those are not really utilized now. The garage is not really utilized now, but gives us more zoning compliance. And we're trying to stay, you know, long-term as in not ask for, or ask for too much relief on what is reasonable, I think. Because of the day-night balance, you get a lot of that too. You know, restaurants have a pretty significant parking requirement. And obviously, those are more weekends and nights after business hours. So we sort of treated that like the rest of the commercial, assuming that at capacity, in theory, you'd have more than enough at any given time.
Can you put the table up?
Yes.
And can you just walk us through the numbers on the table as to, you know, I see a highlighted sixty-two, I see a total of eighty-three-seven. So what, what are the, what's the totals and what, what are you looking for?
So, yeah, so if you start, you can scroll that up a little bit, Monica, is that, the, there you go. So the phase, that, that top of the table of phase one stabilized uses show from the different building addresses, the uses in each building, the square footage associated or unit counts associated in residential. And what that equates to in the total parking required per zoning is in the second table. So that's, you know, multiplying the square footage by the appropriate ratio to get to the, on the lower right-hand corner on that second table. The eight thirty-seven was sort of the magic number of the total fully compliant zoning.
Okay, and does that eight thirty-seven correlate with all of the blue stuff on the map or is there any yellow within the eight thirty-seven?
There is, the blue side of the map is what we're proposing, so there's the negative sixty-two you see there.
Yeah.
Is what would presumably be in the yellow zone now.
Meaning...
So that line would move by sixty-two spaces if we didn't get relief on, or, or that would be used in the East Mill lot.
Does that mean eight thirty-seven minus sixty-two?
Are in, well, on the West Mill side, that is true except that the top of the East Mill lot is reflecting the three hundred and eight spaces there, whereas currently, there's actually more spaces than that that are allocated to West Mill. So it's a little complicated. But the, the drawing as shown would mean there's a deficit of sixty-two spaces, which is why we're asking for the relief on the sixty-four spaces for the apartments to make that nice and clean.
Practical impacts of this?
Well, essentially, it, it consolidates the west, the existing buildings, required land area for the parking onto the site so we can proceed with phase two permitting on the yellow site. And that, and that line was really drawn. The reason why there was sort of this missing sixty-two spaces is that the existing easement to the Southern Pond Town Minions behind us follow that road. So we're using that road as the presumed line that we'd like to keep the historic mill buildings on one side of that line and the development side on the other side of that line.
I, I mean, so I see there's an allocation of where things are being, what properties you're considering for which parking spaces, stuff like that. Does this have any impact on current businesses in the mills, current businesses around the mills, parking around the mill?
What they're doing is, is basically consolidating everything on site. When I sent this out to the other departments for review as well, I only heard back from police who said, you know, they prefer to keep the spaces on site. I know that they, in their use chart, they do utilize the, the shared on-street two-hour parking. But again, that is, that is something that's allocated for the other businesses. We've had some business owners come into the, the office to express concern, mostly due to parking enforcement on the two hours as some people don't use it for just two hours. So that's, that's something that some of the surrounding business owners have been, have in the past couple of days expressed concern over as they stop by the, the office to see the plans.
So do, is anything we do change the parking restrictions or things like that by doing this?
What I would strongly encourage is, is encouraging both businesses and residences to use the parking spaces. If you go through the site on a, in a daily business... If you go through the site on a, in the daily business, you'll see again, certain spaces are more popular than others and other spaces are usually pretty, pretty empty. So it's, it seems to be like there's an enforcement issue right now.
Can you guys talk to that? Is there any, would encourage, I mean, to the extent we can make this simple, that's great. But I think I, it makes sense to, you know, encourage less people hogging those spaces right up front, especially in restaurants and businesses along, along, high, moving more into the parking lot if you're gonna be there for a long period of time.
No, we completely agree with that, actually. We've worked on trying to get the enforcement on the streets, actually. It's our own, it, it obviously affects the more retail businesses on the site that they're, we don't wanna see our all-day office tenants parking on the street using those spaces that are supposed to patronize the businesses or have visitors to the business. So I think the enforcement helps that a lot, you know, there's periods of non-enforcement where you get comfortable parking there all day until, you know, they get in a ticket on their car. We actually send out periodically, John's meeting our tenants. And then I'm like, what are you supposed to park? You know, there's an educational process to, because people are constantly hiring new people, there's new businesses on campus. Trying to give them some credit, but to keep educating people, please park, these zones are allocated for your use. Those spaces support local businesses.
Do they run any parking programs, like within the different companies to show, that really enforces employees to park where they're supposed to park? Like, do they do that?
Some, some businesses are more involved in that than others and encouraging that. We have, we have issues on campus as well as people parking there. I think that's, that's probably a common issue across all businesses and their parking issues, I think. You know, we all in the downtown, right, have shared on-street parking for these retail businesses that are supposed to cycle. And we agree with that. And I'm not sure if there's much more you can do than to take people to keep them.
What's the time when it's allowed?
It's two hours.
Maybe someone should think about whether it should be an hour. I mean, that's not really for us, but it may make sense to those to be an hour and two hours.
Or, or at least have it enforced where if you're over two hours, then there's definitely repercussions.
I think two hours scares off certainly the all-day parkers, generally our businesses.
But an hour scares people off more, because you think might get enforced a little bit quicker.
Yeah, but also the, for instance, the restaurant seats, often enough people come for more than an hour. If you're coming for an hour meeting on campus, those will run long. So there's some resistance that I think some, there, there's some zones that actually have shorter-term parking to get in now, like in front of statues there.
Yeah, I mean, there's no objection to having discussion, further discussion with the police department too, to sort of work things out and see what might work a little bit better in that regard too on-street. There are people that have stuck around with us, so if anyone wants to come up, say something, ask any questions, please, come on.
I'm Cindy, I'm sorry, my name's Betsy Cody, I live in High Street. I'm more concerned about Phase Two because right now, when they have, when you have the Columbia Gas down there, that light showed, was so bright in my backyard, I had to shut my blinds at night. So I'm worried about light, whatever you call it, pollution, noise pollution. If they bring more cars down there, my backyard, it butts it immediately. Also, I heard they were gonna put apartments in there eventually, I'm concerned about more apartments in town. And I just wanna make sure that I don't have light pollution, are we gonna be able to sustain more traffic if we put in more buildings? And there's a lot of wetlands back there too. I mean, the whole ballfield, I mean, it's soaked, and I mean, my backyard, I can't, I won't go out there right now because I'm now sick.
Yeah, those are all really good things that we'll continue to think about.
So it, primarily, I'm just worried about light pollution, noise pollution, and traffic. And safety for the kids. And I've lived there for a lifetime, lifetime.
All right.
I'm Cindy Robinson at fifty-seven Water Street. I do own a business over there. And parking is definitely an issue that's not enforced, that's, I probably have six hundred pictures of it not being enforced. But, but not to even get on that topic, it's, it's why are they doing it? You know, what is the reason for it? Is it, it is for the space too? I do hear that there's a two-hundred-and-fifty unit building coming in and are they pushing the parking out because they can't accommodate the parking within? So why are they building, where it's not like a, we're in Boston, you know, where, where there's public transportation, there's a parking, big parking lot there. And if they don't have the space within to build, they shouldn't be pushing it to the outside businesses that are in the overlay district. There's seven just on that street that are independently owned, that where will our customers park? But where, where will the residents, you know, on High Street have to look at? You know, it's the future down the line, all of this, all of this, why we're here tonight is just to button up for this future plan. And that's what this is. So this meeting tonight is very important because it is, it's just more beyond the parking that will definitely affect me and my customers, affects me every day. But it's, it's also the surrounding areas where building something when there's no parking to begin with, within this.
Yeah, I just wondered, because of the general sense, our view, and this is one of the things that's quite a important mission, is that when anybody builds any type of building, there's a parking requirement and we, this is one of the core things we do. I mean, it's just we look and we say, okay, if you're gonna build something that requires a lot of parking spaces, show us our parking spaces. That's, as I said, an integral part of our process. We wouldn't say, if there's parking spaces on High Street, it has to be within the property. So I, I would feel pretty comfortable that we have a process to deal with this. I understand the concern and, you know, we respect that, but I, I do think the process.
This is beyond me, I mean, there's other business owners as well.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Feel the same way and, and residents that too live in the area that battles it.
Yeah. Are you sure that all the people that park on High Street are used?
On Water Street?
Yeah, Water Street are sort of, use the mills and, yeah.
Oh, I'm very sure, yes. I have better things to do with my time, believe me. But yes, when I pull up early in the morning, I do know the license plate. And it's, and you can see that those lots are empty, that they own right now, that they should be parking in. And it's, you know, we lived in South Boston where there was no parking for many years, so different type of situation. There are parking lots that aren't being utilized for the spaces. So trying to move it out, you know, they do have space in there that's not being utilized, so. And they're, in looking to build it, looking in Phase Two, which is, is just a, this is just a prelude to this next phase. And looking to Phase Two where they might possibly need more parking that will impact everybody. Just not just Water Street too, but all the surrounding areas and just the whole part of it.
My point is that they have to demonstrate this part of the application process that they can provide sufficient parking.
But I don't want this to get kind of swept through as part of it, you know, I mean, there's.
I, I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, I think you raise a legitimate point. And, I mean, I think it's partly the mill owners, it's partly the town that has to deal with the concerns that you have, so.
There should be some sort of determination. The residents, they, they should, they do provide parking for the residents. So it should not be pushed out onto the street where there is a two-hour parking that's not enforced. And that two-hour parking has no day to it, it's any day of the week. And there's overnight parking, it's, and it's not enforced. You basically have to, basically puts the burden on the police department to constantly babysit. And in, in the residential area, now I understand they're phasing out and they were allowing very short-term parking, so somebody could be renting a month or two. And there is some long-term renters, that they would just come and just park and then all weekend and then leave and move out and then it would start again. So there's just no consistency over there. And you know, there's, there's a yarn shop, a hairdresser, a TV, TV place, a nail salon, a barber shop. There are businesses there that are trying to grow in the area. So with, you know, if I had a big parking lot, I'd be using that for my customers, but I don't. So I got clearance for the off-street parking and, because I don't have a parking lot. So this is, this is just going into the areas where are my customers gonna park? Where are the old ladies with the cane coming along? You know, there's, there has to be something, so. Anyways, it goes beyond me, I think. It goes to this development down the road for everybody. I mean, I know High Street is strictly for the mill area and I understand that, but beyond it, this development could affect a lot of different things. So this is just the prelude to it, to show concern. As Peter was pointing out with the common, you know, at the end of the, the planning meeting, that were the concerns of the people.
Common use.
Common use, yes. So this is a common use concern.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This meeting went on way too long.
I bet ten was four hours ago. I'm Kim Pass, I live on High Street, and since I stayed this long, I'll say something. I agree with, I'm mostly here about Phase Two and the light pollution, the traffic. I don't know where the town will put all their snow in the middle of the winter because that's where it seems to end up in, like, the yellow area on there. And I'm just really concerned about Phase Two and logistics of how that's gonna work. And when I looked at the Phase Two, they actually, I think, had the residents going on the blue in the parking garage. I think they're gonna put residential there where the parking garage is, is that what the other Phase Two thing looked like?
That was, and the East Mill is where current residents.
East Mill, yeah, but where the parking garage is, you can barely see the blue where it is. Is that gonna be residential? So where's the parking for that residential area gonna be when you? That's another concern, is are you gonna look for more parking or? I, I don't know, just the whole, the whole thing is.
That's what this is about, I think they aren't, they aren't looking for more parking.
Yeah.
What is that, what is that? So, do you wanna, David, you wanna come to the other question?
So, obviously, this application covers West Mill and the housing that was going on. East Mill had its parking requirement satisfied, in part because it's used in common, the parking garage. There's, I mean, it can sometimes be hard to tell from the perspective, there's over six hundred parking spaces in that garage alone, three hundred of which right now are used by Merrimack College because they're so underutilized. And we're trying to, to, you know, do the best to use the lots, including to let the town push some snow onto our land and other things that have been conveniences over the years and, and like I said, staging for our construction. So I think in, in talking about the East Mill, the building going on East Mill that we permitted last year, that parking is satisfied and the garage and beyond, and doesn't overlap with the parking that's being committed to West Mill and that West Mill's had a long-term easement over.
Okay.
And did we talk, did we talk about whether or not there would be, like, the parking for the project that we did last year, whether it would be like specific parking for residents, so to encourage them to park in certain spaces? I know, I think we had that, I don't remember how that came out.
Yeah, I think, I think that one is gonna create less of an issue because it's so far setback from the public way. I think the issue that one of our neighbors was bringing up is that the, the entrance to one phase of our residential is along Water Street. So even though there are spaces available on our lots, which I think speaks to there being not a capacity issue, there's a behavioral issue that sometimes people just park in the street by the door because they can, especially overnight or beyond enforcement hours. And it's something we try to, again, encourage our tenants to work with. Most of them are long-term tenants, so you know, I think our typical lease is a year lease and many of those tents now have been there a couple of years, so hopefully over time, people are being trained into the right sort of behaviors. But it's, that is hard for us to enforce, is what we think.
But it's interesting, thinking because you can't do it 100% yourself, the town has a big piece of it. And I don't know what your dialogue with the police department is managing.
Yeah, well, I think, I think it's, it's true, we've had discussions on that, we encourage enforcement. We think that, yeah, it helps support the retail businesses, which really help that campus thrive as far as the life of the campus. I think it is not the preferred activity of the police officers, understand that they have better things to do, they go around ticketing cars. And so, you know, we, we encourage it, we're not trying to overreach what the public way would be used for. At the same time, we understand that, you know, we, there's some obligation on us to try to encourage our tenants to really understand what that implication is to the life of the campus, to try to park in your own spot so other people can use those.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much control our board has over that, but I think as we talk about Phase Two, I think it is a, it is an important thing to discuss as we keep more residences in there. And as we go through this to where are they gonna park and how do we get, how do we keep those spots for those that are intended? Not sure how much we can do, but I think we should continue to talk about it because I think for the board of management, for the police department and for you guys, that is important to keep talking about. Okay, anyone else?
I just wonder how many apartments have been out currently?
On, in West Mill, there's thirty-nine apartments.
So they're fully rented?
Yeah, they're fully rented. East Mill, there were an additional twenty-seven apartments that are fully rented too.
Thank you, David. Sir?
Guy Richards, forty-eight Water Street, I have the TV and appliance business. Excuse my voice. I, I would ask the board to take a serious look at the parking. I'm sure that it can, can be squared away, but the way it is now, it's not so bad now because it's, the winter parking's here, but there is an ample parking down back. And to blame the police department, they play musical chairs. It's two-hour parking, the police come, they run out and move, move their vehicles and so forth. But there isn't enough parking down back. And I don't blame the tenants for parking on Water Street because if they park down back, they gotta walk all the way up to Water Street and then they gotta walk the ramp to get into the building there. And you see, you see a woman with two kids and some bag of groceries coming up and a trailer. It's, it's tough, so. I, I don't think the two-hour limit should be done away with or even shortened up. But I park out front and the two-hour parking stops at my, my building. So I can park out there. I used to always park in the back, I have off-street parking. But if I don't park out front and I get a delivery, like FedEx comes in with a forty-foot trailer and stops, it's, I can't move the van, I can move the van and let them in there of a customer that's coming. Now, what's happened there, if you notice, if you, you go down any of those businesses, there's no crosswalk. And the reason there's no crosswalk there is because it would take up two parking spots. And that's why they did away with the crosswalk, but it's tough. And I've had several people, you know, elderly people being in their TV and coming in to look at something. And I tell them, call me, I'll, I'll move the van across the driveway and you can park in front. I've had them pulling the driveway and they can drive around the building. But the problem with the, with the elderly, their driving is not too good sometimes. So it's easier if I move the van, block, block one of my driveway and let them land in front, so that's it. I, I just think it needs to be all worked out.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting to give the, give your view. Thanks.
All right, so.
I have a picture on my phone if any of you wanna see it.
Oh, we can even bear.
Down back, when, when they do park off the street, it's full, so.
All right, so why don't we continue this and we'll try to make a decision at our next meeting, would that work?
All right, I'll, I'll turn this and bring it, a new one.
Let's see what we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Approval of the minutes from the December eighteen, twenty-eighteen meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.